Wilson.
Yeah.
I will have it have to sign off at one and 1:30. They scheduled something for me. So I'll sign back on as soon as I get that done.
Okay, so if we get to the school construction piece, you want us to just kind of push that back until you can join us?
That's up to you. I certainly would allow Fern or you or Peter or Jane to do it since we were all involved.
Peter's going yep. I don't know what he's going yep to, but okay.
Neither.
So, well, we'll see how it goes and we'll. Wouldn't be the first time we've played it by ear. Right, Fern?
That is right.
Dance that dance more than once over the years.
Yep.
The courts are now giving us less than one day's notice, which is crazy.
It's true.
Sure is. Sure is. So you want to bring these folks in, Mary? Hello, John. I'm a cider and doughnuts in the back.
Who am I bringing in?
Okay. I guess you need to. Are they all in?
They're all in.
Okay, great. So, good morning. It is a couple of minutes past our scheduled start time. We have a board member just taking a seat here and we'll be convening our workshop in just a few moments. What I would like to do is go through introductions just because we have folks here via Zoom. And so we'll start in the room here in the cross building. I'm Wilson Hess. I'm the Chair of the State Board of Education from Freedom, Maine.
General appoint from Ballman, Maine.
And Peter Gunning for Lewiston.
Casey Maddox, I'm a student from Scarborough.
John Byrne from Rockland, Maine.
Dan Chuda, Deputy Commissioner.
Mary Becker, Staff Support.
And from Sagat.
Vern DeJardin from Sagat.
And from, are you in Bangor or are you in Winterport this morning?
I'm in Bangor. Martha Harris from Winterport.
Thank you. And we've been joined by our Vice Chair who's connecting to our audio. Jane, would you introduce yourself?
Jane Sexton, Gorham, Maine.
We know who most of the guests are, but we're going to run through. So Dan, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, I'm Dan Allen. I'm from the Maine Education Association.
Have you with us, Holly?
Hi, I'm Holly Kierier with Dean Principal Association.
Yes, thank you for joining us, Holly. Good to see you. And is it Amy Frost from Ellsworth?
Yes, Abigail Frost.
Abigail, thank you.
Thank you.
And Charlie? You all may just be recording. Charlie Palatier, are you on audio? So Charlie represents WFKT, which is the cable channel in Fort Kent. And I think they're broadcasting to us today. And Laura Johnson?
Hi, I'm Laura Johnson. I'm from Pearson. We support Maine Connections Academy.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for being with us, Laura. So at 10:35, we'll convene. Welcome to all that are attending in person or in Zoom. And Mary, can you send Vicky Wallach a link? She just popped in.
You're going to see my Vicky Wallach.
Okay, so. Let's just take care of some housekeeping here. And I'd like to welcome Deputy Commissioner Dan Chuda, who's with us today. And he'll share our first two agenda items. The first is report on behalf of the Commissioner. And then depending upon how you want to segue it, we'll segue into an update on the progress of the Chapter 15 work that's going on. So Dan, please.
Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you. Couple updates for you. First, last week, as Martha knows well, we did announce the Teacher of the Year, who's Cindy Sewell at the Talbot School in Portland. So we're very excited for her and. So yay. I don't know what that was, but that was a good fanfare. Last week, at the end of the week, I'm not sure if there were any State Board members there or not, but Amanda Peterson from UTC was also named the CTE Educator of the year. So we got a good week of celebration for our educator. As of yesterday, Portal was linked to the DOE's website for you to check out. It lists the positive cases in schools in the last 30 days by school. You'll also notice that the majority of which are listed with a less than five indication for privacy purposes. So those are listed there for you to review. Those will be updated twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, noting any of the cases at our schools. Those are both students and staff listed on there. And we do have a couple of active outbreaks at this point, the largest of which is the Community Regional Charter School up in Cornville slash South Egan. And we have one in New York as well. So a couple of active outbreaks. Just so you know that that partnership continues between us and DHDHS slash CDC. We continue our daily briefings, but there are also, in the case of outbreaks, special meetings that are convened really as much as necessary for the school to be supported. And again, it's CDC as well as DOE colleagues on there to answer questions that they have or any procedural things that they have going on. So we've been part of a number of those meetings for the outbreaks specifically. Next is just an update on coronavirus relief funds. I think I've given you some updates about those chunks of money before. But just to give you kind of a sense of where we're at. So currently out and available, Corona CRF-1, which is the first half of the funds that were available, $165 million-ish dollars that were made available to schools. We had some states set aside projects as well that we have been working on to benefit the whole state. We also had a million of that. $165 was set aside for adult education programs specifically, so they've been applying for those. We also had a day programming. $25 million was available for SAUs to put together programming that fills the gap during the day when students will be hybrid. So it wasn't to take the place of before and after care. It was really during the day when it's typically would be up school. And we had just shy of 50 applicants, so 50 units applied for that funding, which was helpful and went a long way to support that programming. And then most recently was the second half of the CRF, bigger pot of money. CRF-2 is now available for SAUs and they're actively applying for those funds as well. The most challenging and.
And that amount was $164, is that right?
Yeah, it was the other half of the 300 and some odd million dollars. Yep, it was slightly smaller than the first batch of money. The most cool feedback that we've gotten from school units about CRF in general is the December 30th deadline that it has to be used by. And of course, that was either put in there by Congress or by Treasury. I'm not sure exactly who, but it wasn't us. Treasury has communicated in their ACQs that it's the end of December that it has to be used by.
And they mean committed, don't they, when they say used by?
Yes, they mean committed because, you know, there could be payroll that goes, you know.
Sometime in January.
Liquidated in January. But yep, it has to be committed by the end of December.
I would say, Dan, that that's a misrepresentation from the newspaper because they were saying it had to be used, not committed. And I thought, wow, that's saying an awful lot for schools to be able to do that.
I just think that's a useful distinction for folks that are listening to understand.
Yep, that's accurate. So those are the funding updates that we have. Of course, everyone is kind of at the back of the state level, very concerned about what their budgets will look like locally for next year. And all state agencies are working on what their budgets will look like. So I don't have information for you at this point about what we're looking towards, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that the revenue forecasting update in December will be positive. It's still going to be bleak, I think, but it may be more positive than we initially thought, so.
Question over here. Yep.
Yeah, last night I was on the board meeting for Baxter and it was interesting. It wasn't the teachers, but it was the parents when they were asked, they had time to ask questions and they all were concerned about, you know, where are we going to lose money? Because we had lost a number of students between last year and this year. And so they said exactly what you're saying right now. They're hoping it won't change, but it all depends. Because I guess what will then happen is that the individual schools will maybe have to up the amount of money, which if they do, then that does affect our charter schools because the child coming from that school to our Baxter or whatever will be given that difference in money. But they're all hoping the same thing that you said, that it won't be bad and it won't look as bad as we've been thinking it was going to.
Can I just do a check in with the folks that are via Zoom? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear folks okay? Or, okay, good, okay. I just wanted to be sure. Thanks very much, Dan.
Just for folks, the Commissioner and I actually met here, right here in this room, last Friday with MSSA Funding Committee. It was their meeting and they invited us to come because they're very concerned, obviously. The three, I would say, bigger factors that are weighing in on this, obviously it's the state budget and what support can come from the state is a factor. Enrollment is a factor. They're concerned about that. Families have chosen to do different things this fall and how the enrollment will play in. And then valuations, valuations have gone up across the state. So that obviously kicks into how much, you know, what the mill rate will be as well and what the local obligation will be for education. So there's some pretty big, three big factors that interplay in order to determine what that will look like. So as the pieces kind of come, you know, as far as enrollment is concerned, tomorrow is the deadline that schools have to have their enrollments in and then superintendents have until the end of the month to certify what those numbers are. So we'll get those numbers cleared up in a little bit. Valuation is done, so that's all set. And then obviously we're still working on the state budget for what that will be. But those pieces do play in together for what GPA.
Sorry, Dan. The evaluations within the town, how would those differ? I mean, wouldn't it be that the town has to take a vote of their selectmen of whom whether they have to make a change? Because evaluations is set.
So, right, so the evaluation helps determine what the town's ability to pay. And so when you have this and it factors into the formula, different towns have it, you know, whether it's all enrollment or it's valuation, it's half and half and those types of things. So as valuations go up, it means that the town's ability to pay increases, which means that the state's portion decreases. You know, I think the argument for things like looking at median income and those other economic factors keep coming up to the surface to say that valuation probably isn't a good indicator. There are numerous examples.
But nonetheless, that's hardwired into the formula.
It's in the formula, I can't remember, right, by statute. Even the fact, you know, people have said, well, could we do a whole harmless, so to speak, or, you know, stick to last fall's numbers? Even that is in statute as well. So, you know, there may be some options, but we have to look to see what the data is showing us at this point. So not surprisingly, towns along water are often examples of where.
I want to get a sidebar in here.
Yeah, high property values and sometimes the ability to.
And already because of the heavy special needs population that we have in our area, we were already getting clobbered by the split. Now, we've just had our first revaluation since 2005. Our taxes went up 40%. And I'm sure lots of other people in the community have the same thing. A few probably went down. That's not helping either. That means, that means, you know, we'll be paying more, the state will be paying less. It doesn't mean that the income of the people living in Rockland is going up. You know, it's a very, very. It's a conundrum. It's a lot of things.
And then, of course, one of the big questions is will there be federal relief coming to the states that will help to be with things like education?
Where's everybody coming from?
Jenna?
Yeah, my other question, Dan, would be, do you have any handle at all on the number of children that are not going to be in the count this year because the parents have decided, even as groups, to homeschool? Because this is what we found at Baxter. We went from 300, don't hold me, about 314 students down to 314, wait a minute, 413 down to 399, or 393. And they were trying to get a handle on that difference to see how many of those were homeschool children. Because I'm wondering how that's going to affect the rest of the state as well.
We're hearing anecdotally in different places, it's very high and some places it's a little lower. That will be part of the enrollment count because when a family says that they're going to be homeschooling, then the student has exited from the local school district. So that would be part of their October 1. I can't take it as sense, but we are hearing that.
But it's going to be discernible. It's going to, we're pretty sure.
We think so.
Anecdotally.
Yep.
Yep.
So, I don't know how we got off on a tangent there. Oh, I did. I talked about local funding. Otherwise, things are going fairly well within the department as always. People are connecting. We continue our weekly connection with the Commissioner. So Wednesday mornings where we used to have, again, here in this room, the whole department would get together for a quick briefing meeting. We continue those weekly with all staff, which is nice to at least connect virtually through Zoom on our views. And that's, I guess, a high level report for where the department is at this point before I dive into 115.
Any questions? So let's see if we have further questions. I'm looking out to Zoom land from our folks there. I've seen heads shaking and negative. Thank you for taking questions as we came along, Dan. Okay, so now I'm just doing play by play for folks that are following along. So now Dan's going to give us an update on the ongoing work on Chapter 115, which is educator preparation programs.
Okay, certification of educational personnel is the topic usual here today. So I'm going to repeat probably some of this, but I think it's important for you to kind of get a full sense of where we are at and where we've come. So as you know, because we've had these conversations back in the spring, we have endeavored to totally overhaul Chapter 115. And in doing so, we have reached out to the Professional Standards Board to see if any of those members were interested. A wide majority of those members were, which is great because that means that we have representation from multiple different stakeholder groups. Those individuals, by the way, were nominated by their respective association. So the teacher members were nominated by the MEA, principal members by the MPA, et cetera. And then we did augment a few places where the numbers were a little bit lower or there wasn't somebody on the PXB that was interested in participating. So we have a committee of around 25-ish. Peter happens to be a member of that, which has been great connection between that work and the State Board. And that group started meeting the end of May. And we've been meeting weekly since then and including right up until tonight. With the exception of one week, we took off for the July 4th holiday. But otherwise, we've been meeting weekly via Zoom, which is also great, by the way, because they do come from all parts of the state. So they're able to participate without having to travel. We were doing Friday mornings through the summer and that started to conflict with the school schedule, so we're now on Wednesday evening. At the beginning, our conversations were collective. We had full group meetings together. We started off having conversations about a code of cooperation. We knew that as a consensus-based rulemaking group that we would need to be making decisions. So that was part of what we discussed. We use the thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs to the side indicator. We use that right off the bat actually to decide on the code of cooperation. So we use it right away. But then we started getting into conversations really to provide the foundational work that was going to be necessary to have a new rule. That included information about what other places do for certification. So people kind of scoured, not just our country, but we actually have someone on the committee that's originally from Canada. And she said, hey, can I look at what the province was doing? And we said, sure, why not? If it's a good idea, we can steal it just as well as we can steal from somebody else. So we did kind of like what we liked and what we didn't like process on that. And then Stephanie and Anhel did a nice overview of the current rule and what's in existence. It's kind of funny that oftentimes people talk about 115 and really haven't spent a lot of time with what's in the document itself. So we wanted to make sure that people knew what was in it and what some of the challenges were. There's also, as you folks know, some interplay with other rules. Chapter 13, for instance, are the examinations, of course, are rules around the educator preparation program. So there are interplay between some of the other rules. From there, we also wanted to make sure that we were clear about different things that come into the work of an educator. So for instance, and we came up with three categories. One was what are certification criteria? What are the types of things that would lead to a certification? And we kind of brainstorm with those ideas. Another was employability characteristics. There are things that superintendents and principals look for when they're hiring somebody, which doesn't necessarily mean it's a certification rule, but it's something that they look for in hiring an individual. Is it a good fit for their community? And so we put those into a column. And then the last column was what are the types of things that people need to learn through the course of their career? You know, classroom management, for instance, kept kind of coming up for teachers. Like, you never really can really, really, really well learn about classroom management until you're in the classroom and you're doing it. So to make that, just to kind of play off of this example, to make that a certification rule while it's part of education preparation programs, you have to learn that while doing it. So it's probably not a great certification criteria. If somebody is a brand new teacher, they've probably had some experience in classroom or internship. But again, they haven't had a lot of time to hone that skill with classroom management. So it may or may not be something that can come through, you know, the hiring process and interview and so forth. So that's probably a skill that needs to be developed through professional learning at the local level. So we made sure that we were clear on kind of the nature of those three different criteria so that one kind of didn't bleed into the other. We weren't kind of stacking the deck, so to speak, into the certification criteria. There's a role and a place for those types of things and they can live in 115, but there are other avenues for those other pieces. So that was a good conversation because what we anticipated down the road was saying, well, here's a requirement that we might want to add. And we could bring it back to that and say, well, is that really a credential and criteria? Is it an employability characteristic or is it an ongoing learning that someone could be? So with all of that work, and that took us a couple of weeks to cover those different pieces, we had a good foundation. We kept coming back to the memo that I shared and discussed with you about simplicity and flexibility and the essential questions that we wanted to keep asking ourselves. Is this going to be something that will endure? Is this going to be a requirement that's going to weed out potentially excellent educators? Is this something that's going to have a cultural bias that, again, could weed out excellent educators? So those are kind of our guiding principles that we use for that work. And then we shifted into small group work. So then we broke out on Zoom into a teacher group, an administrator group, a special educator group, and a CTE group. And from that point on, primarily work was focused on those individual sections of Part Two of the rule. We did have a couple of different opportunities where we came back together, just updating each other. Different groups are having different conversations on praxis, of course. And we wanted to, you know, make sure that those conversations were cross-pollinating across the different groups. So we did do a couple of check-ins across the way. But primarily, the work was focused on folks really diving deeply into what the requirements were going to be. So fast forward a little bit, we did have a couple of the Ed Specialist certificates that were of interest to professional groups in the field. We didn't really have representation from those folks on the committee itself. So I decided to have those groups that were interested have reached out, have reached out previously and ask them to do a presentation for the full group. And three of those groups took us up on it. It was the Library Media Specialist. We're, all three, I would say, were thrilled for the opportunity to give a half hour presentation for the four groups that hear what they were proposing. So it was Library Media Specialist, School Psychologist, and CTE. Each had a chance to present to their group and submit their proposals. So that was good work as well. But between Karen Kuziak and I and the Commissioner's office, we've kind of taken the role of kind of adjusting the Ed Specialist certificates just because we did have a group that was working on that. And the changes, for the most part, were minimal in collectively in Ed Specialists. Fast forward a little bit more, we got to the point where I was having folks kind of wind down their work with offering because it was getting to be time to present our proposals to you. I reached out to Wendy, who's the Chair of the Certification of Higher Education, and said, Wendy, we'd love a chance to present. It probably isn't going to fit within the number of meetings that you have. Would you be open to adding meetings? She and the committee were very willing, which were very appreciative. They added four meetings to the month of October so that the groups can present the proposals. We've had two of those so far, and they were last week. In the first meeting, I did a similar overview to what I've just done now for the committee. And then we had the administrator group present their proposals. And just to kind of give you a nature of, sense of the nature of what some of the changes are, some of the redundancies have been removed. And this is kind of across all the areas. I'll use administrators as one of the examples, but this is kind of true across areas. Some of the redundancies have been removed. The groups are also very interested in looking to see, are there certificates that nobody really uses anymore? They can go. They're also looking at the language of the rule to say, is this user friendly? I know the answer to that one. But in some cases, what they have done was the pathways across all the subgroups, the pathways to which would lead somebody to a certificate was still very important to people. They wanted to make sure that there are different ways to go about getting to the certificate, whether that's through an educator preparation program, whether that's through the work experience, you know, a couple of different ways to get to it. So the way that they've done some of that clarification is they've brought kind of the criteria for all pathways kind of front and center and said that no matter how you go about it, these are some of the things that are going to be required for all. And then we're trying to actually visually, while being also accessible, line up the pathways so that people can actually see with the visual presentation how the different pathways can go. So the administrators have done that work again as an example. They had some good conversations. They were thinking they could really shrink it down and then had some conversations about why it's important to keep the certificate separate. They had some conversations about the professional standards that are currently in the rule and updating those to the most recent version of those standards. And then again, the pathways are what they're looking at. And the nature of praxis that they're interested in that also has some interest in others is that rather than, the question becomes a little bit more complicated than praxis yes or praxis no. Because if it's praxis no, then it becomes what's the alternative? Which I would say the teacher group is probably most heavily involved in that piece because of the content part, which is different than some of the other areas. But across the groups, what they're interested in saying is praxis may be one of the pathways. If you want to take a praxis and that's the way that you want to demonstrate it, go for it. Does everybody have to take praxis? No. But if praxis is one of the ways that you want to. But if Praxis is one of the ways that you want to do it versus an education preparation or portfolio or work experience, and you're successful in that way, then go for it and make that be one. So it becomes an option rather than every partner. So that was a good conversation. The committee asked, I know we've got two different committees here, but the State Board, Certification, Higher Education gave good feedback and asked great questions for the group. It just so happened that the next night, we had our big group committee conversation. They were able to take that feedback. And then we were able to, the next night, Thursday night, was the second opportunity, turn that feedback right around with an updated proposal. That night was also for the Ed Specialists. So Karen and I presented the Library Media Specialist and the School Psychologist proposals. Again, some good questions that we'll take back from clarification and bring back to the committee. And the third piece for that Thursday night was the CTE certificates. And Carol Pelletier, who's from Midcoast, actually, School Technology, was the representative on our committee. And she did a nice job of kind of outlining some of the feedback that she'd gotten from CTE directors over time. And since that's the work that she does, she's very well aware of the implications for certification. And again, updating the work in CTE. Again, some opportunities there for some combining of some of the endorsements because there's some overlap where some of those pieces. So that's where we are up until tonight, which is again, another committee meeting. I'm not sure what the verb is. I've asked or warned or pleaded somewhere in the middle of those with our group to say that we'll continue to meet. We also know that, you know, once we get it to the State Board and then it gets beyond to the legislature, the legislature may have some feedback as well for the committee. It's not quite a lifetime commitment on this committee, but pretty close. So our next two meetings are towards the end of October.
I think you might want to add threaten to your list of verbs.
People have been very willing, which I appreciate. The next two meetings are at the end of the month. I think it's like a Monday and a Thursday, something like that with Wendy's committee. We'll cover Part 1, which the Commissioner and I have worked on, which are really the basic requirements for certification, as well as special education that night. And then the final, the fourth meeting will be for teacher. That's by volume and perhaps by complexity, the biggest. And so we want to make sure we have the most time for the teacher group. And if I didn't say this, I will say again that those subcommittees that I've mentioned that have been working since May have been very willing, as they're able to, to present to the committee as well. So it's not me doing all the presentation. It's actually the background for some of these, which is, I think, that catches you up, willing to answer any questions that might be there.
John Burr.
It's more of an observation of listening, Dan, from a process standpoint, which is what you've really got to summarize all the steps. I could take a lot of encouragement from that because it sounds as though things are going to, I don't want to say use enough, but become more flexible. The pathway approach is going to introduce options for people. Yeah. But of course, it all depends on the substance, what you've described. And I'm not pressing you to tell us the substance because, you know, that would be inappropriate. Wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's talked about in the, you know, in the meetings that we've had so far. I've tried to, you know, without getting word for worded, which is kind of describe for you the nature of what some of the content is.
And the interaction with committees, it all sounds good, bringing in other outside resources. Because from a CTE standpoint, which is a special interest of mine, I'm encouraged by what you said there.
They are endorsing the removal of the dance Praxis from the CTE requirements, by the way.
That's good.
I'll let you in on that, though.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. It came all the way away from that.
Made the trip.
John's actually more interested in the hairstyling.
Good to know, future reference. Speaking of, I'm not sure if there were more questions. I did want to talk about timeline.
I think there is one over there.
Okay.
Martha, did you have a question?
Unmute, Martha.
Unmute, please.
No, thanks. Thanks for asking.
Other questions from our Zoom participants? Okay. So.
So timeline.
Yes, timeline.
Which.
Can I just do a little setup on timeline?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank Wendy and the members of the committee. Dan and his colleagues have produced a very ambitious timeline. And their willingness to adapt their schedule has really been laudatory. And that timeline is such that it's possible, I think Dan would say desirable, but he'll speak to that in just a moment, that we may be at a point where we could consider action at our November meeting. So it's important for us to get as much of a grounding from Dan as we can. That's my setup.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's where I was going next. I was just trying to get the timeline back up in front of me in case I want to be accurate with this. So yeah, so we've accomplished the two committee meetings. Today, I'm providing this overview for you. I think the plan was that Wendy is able to join. She was also going to try to give a.
She's going to join us this afternoon.
This afternoon.
She has a medical appointment this morning.
So, you know, the members of the Certification, Higher Education Committee could provide you additional details from their perspective during a committee report. We've got two more meetings, as I mentioned, on October 26th and 29th with Wendy at all to present the remaining subcategories, as I mentioned. And then, as Wilson just mentioned, your next full State Board meeting will be the 4th, at which time that, again, will provide the document then, seeking adoption at that point, which will then kick off the timeline for filing with the Secretary of State, posting for comment period in the hearing. Hearing would occur at the beginning of December. The comment period would end the middle of December. We respond to comments, make any changes. It's the make any changes that has me a little worried because I would need to come back to the State Board if that were necessary. We'd likely need an emergency meeting at that point because you don't have anything scheduled after. But you have one in December, but the timing just doesn't work out quite right. At the end of.
But we have a January meeting.
You do have a January meeting, but that one is after the requirement to file with the Secretary of State as provisionally adopted on January 8th. So anyhow.
So the Christmas card party is sacrosanct, Dan, so.
Okay. So that's what we're looking at again, as Wilson mentioned. You know, we're doing our due diligence with the committee to make sure that questions are there and out. And certainly, we want to make sure that you folks have your questions answered and clarification on the 4th. But that's the timeline that we're looking at with that kind of hard and fast date of January 8th, which was established. I think it's the second Friday of January is the way it's termed. And this year, it seems a little early, but it's January 8th is how that falls.
Question. Dan, how do you get the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee involved before it gets to? Because I worry about them, that they haven't had the preparation that everyone else has had. And all of a sudden, they look at something and say, well, I don't like that. And then you get kicked back. So I just want, is there a process that you have in mind of how to involve them now and as you're going forward so that you don't end up getting that kind of a situation in the end?
Well, I think, of course, in an ideal world, that would be happening. And also, as you know, the legislature is not convening.
Right.
The committee is not convening. So it will, you know, it's also a question, what's going to happen in January? When this session is supposed to convene? I'm not sure. I can't speak to the legislature, obviously, but what will even happen at that point? We'll be kind of in the thick of things with.
But you could be bringing them all in by Zoom if you worked with the chairs right now, right? And I just get nervous about them because I know how they operate before. We've gone through this 115 before.
Yep.
I've sat in those three-hour sessions where you're listening to what people have to say and then things getting thrown back.
It's a little more complex than just coming, having them come together on Zoom, unfortunately.
Oh, no, I know that. But at least to me, that helps it a little bit. That's all I was concerned about.
It's not that easy, though, with the rules that they have around the convenings and their meetings and so forth. So we stay in contact with the chairs, certainly, very regularly.
Oh, okay. I guess, and then my other question would be, going back to something you had said earlier, one of the things I've always been concerned about is that I don't think that student teachers get enough student teaching time. Where does that fall in to the, you know, the things that you've been talking about? Because I would really, if it were my way, they'd be doing something in their junior year and another thing in their senior. I don't care how the college decides to do it. They can do it the first semester of their senior year and the second semester. But I'll never forget Colby and how they were doing three weeks of student teaching and that was it. They're not anymore. But that's what they were doing. And I said, this is insane. And I think, and that classroom management, I know you said, doesn't fit in that. But it really does because the more time they're in that classroom, the more they begin to understand what, you know. So where does something like that fit?
So many of the certificates have X number of, during blank out, it's weeks or hours.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's clock hours.
Weeks.
I think it's.
It's thinking it's weeks. And there was some conversation on that with some of the administrative certificates as well.
Yep.
I think it is weeks. It's X number of weeks. And I'm drawing a blank on how many weeks it actually is versus credit hours. And that would find its way into some of the pathway pieces.
Okay, because I don't remember reading it as weeks at all. Because when I, as I said, when I saw Colby's, I was in shock. How can you get away with this with only, you know, only the three weeks?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's weeks. I can double check as we kind of move on and let you know. But I think it's measured in, the internships are measured in like five weeks.
Because I would think that that might then, if they had more time, it would go into their portfolio at the end. That would be even more impressive of what they've been doing. As their alternative way.
I think Casey had a comment.
And that's like, when you mentioned that Colby was only doing three weeks of student teaching, that makes me so sad. Like, for everybody that I've talked to that's a teacher, they say that part of me really is student teaching is like the biggest test of, do I really want to do this with my life?
You got it.
And from what my mom tells me, like, if I can get through student teaching, it's going to be a breeze after that because that was harder than actually teaching her. And to only have three weeks, I mean.
They don't anymore.
I would feel so uncomfortable, like, yeah, I think that's so important. Like, to have to teach a classroom of students by myself and I'm picturing like doing such little amount of preparation time with another teacher in the room? No, there's no way. That's like asking somebody to fly a plane after being in a cockpit for like an hour with somebody else.
Actually, you do fly it after an hour. But it's the landing that's the crazy part, John.
So what was Colby's response when that got?
This was going back maybe six years ago when they were being certified.
When you brought that to their attention, somebody did.
Oh, well, but is it any different now than?
No, no. My question is.
I know that.
What did they say to defend three weeks?
We didn't, we didn't bring it up to them. And that's what I said. I didn't have the guts to do it and I should have done it then. And we allowed it to slip through that way.
I'm astounded.
Yeah, I know. I've been astounded at myself. But I sat there and I thought, I'm not going to say anything. But I mean, even now, what do you hear about Colby? So many of the kids don't want to do their student teaching when? In their senior year, in the second semester, why? Because they're having so much fun at college. They come back in the fall to do it in the fall semester.
But what Casey said, not just you as a potential teacher determine, is this really what I want to do? But the fact of the matter is, you can see so much more by what they do in the classroom.
You got it.
All the other things that prepare us for being a teacher.
Yeah, they're going to like realize.
So Dan, before we give you complete control back, you know, I just want to make a comment about one of Jana's earlier issues, which had to do with the legislature. And I just want board members to know that Peter's Legislative Action Committee has kind of kicked that can around a little bit. I don't know whether you're ready to really throw anything out there, which we can do later today if you want. But I think there's probably more can kicking that needs to be done. But Peter has got that group thinking about, you know, how we might be able to do some outreach.
We're identifying what each committee's interests are. So that when there is legislation, we're sure that we are tackling all of those items.
We'll see. I don't think it's quite ready for even quasi-prime time yet. But I just want you to know that Peter's got folks thinking about that. So, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, my pleasure. It looks like it's 15 weeks currently in the rule. That's all I have to share at this point.
Let's see if there are any other questions for Dan? Or positions that people want to take? Hearing none? I would just, again, like to remind folks on the board that the timeline that Dan has presented is, I think the word I'm trying to use is ambitious, Dan. Is that the one I?
I'd use that.
I'm okay to do. And that, you know, even if that timeline isn't exactly on point, I think all board members should be prepared for, you know, some extra time on task in the future on this. And of course, I would remind board members of our experience during 2019 with Chapter 115. So in addition to what Dan talked about in terms of it being endurable and being user-friendly and having pathways and those sorts of things, I think we have a special concern that we try to do what we have to do to be sure that we get it right this time. So, and again, thanks to Wendy and Jana and Fern and Jane for her work earlier in the year in pushing all this forward and the extra work that's been going on now. Thanks to Dan for his leadership. And he's built sort of the master of, you know, consensus based on Zoom now. Like, if he has a consulting. John.
I'm just going back to the business of how it ends up inevitably with the politicians. At some point, to the extent that these groups, these two groups are joined at the hip, really solidly behind what they come up with, I would think would give us, give more weight to dealing with the legislature. I realize they hold the cards. I understand that. But to the extent that there's no daylight between Wendy's committee and this group. Is that a?
I think it's, you know, our committee and the entire board, which is why I would say.
I realize it's the entire board, but.
And, and yes, I think you're right on with that, John. I think, I'll speak for myself. I believe what this committee has seen so far in terms of their consensus-based process, I think that's a very important ingredient. If we, if it proves out for the rest of the way, what we've seen so far, I think that's a very important ingredient to be able to communicate to the public and to the legislature that, you know, these are, most of these ideas are rooted in the practitioners and their understanding. And that has been vetted by folks like us. If that's the way it all works out, we'll see. The proof of that pudding will probably be during the public comment period where it could really solidify that or the wheels could come off the cart. And you don't know until you get to that part. But I think, I think that's a key piece to all of that. So yeah, John, I think it's absolutely right that it's important that this committee. So yeah, John, I, I think it's, it's absolutely right that it's important that, that this committee, CAG, and the board, you know, get, get deep into the understanding of this. And I think we as, as the State Board of Education also have an obligation to see that the actual professional standards for it, which is widely represented on this body, but that it touches the bases that it needs to touch. And their meeting, Peter, their meeting next week, end of this week?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. Okay. Okay. So they're having their second of five required meetings soon. So it's, it's important that, you know, we keep them, like I say, touching the bases as, as we go around. So there are a number, number of moving parts here. So, and again, thank you, Dan, for your leadership in all this. Great question, John. Well, I want to thank you for both reports, Dan. And I think Dan will be able to stay with us to the rest of the morning and perhaps for part of the afternoon. And again, thank you very much. We're going to proceed to, to board member reports. And I, again, will start with folks that are here in the cross building. And then we'll move over to folks that are with us on Zoom. And where shall we start? I want to start with Casey because I thought she made a very articulate presentation via email to say, no, the chance for us to meet in person is an important thing to do for our dialogue. And, and I want to be sure we have that opportunity. So I want to give Casey credit for that. I'm going to give her first opportunity to report because we're always intrigued by what you're doing anyway.
Yeah, I, I was so nervous to send that email because I didn't want anybody to think that I was trying to disregard, you know, obviously the health concerns going on. But like somebody who only has, you know, what is it, like eight months left to be coming to these meetings? I was like, I want to be in Augusta. So, thank you.
Me too.
Right now, my life mostly consists of college applications. I've finally narrowed down my top three schools to Brandeis, which is in Waltham, Mass., and Bates College in Lewiston. I'm applying to like eight schools in total, but those are my top two. And I just took the SAT a couple of weeks ago and then I'm taking the ACT on the 24th, which is originally supposed to be at Bonny Eagle, which is like 20 minutes away from me, which is great. And then I got moved to Bath, which is like 40 minutes away from me, which is not so great. And now it's in Bangor. So I have to get up at four o'clock in the morning and drive for three hours to take a standardized test for five hours, which is really fun.
I have a question for you because we went through this last night with Baxter, that their students were not being allowed to go back to their local high schools to take the SATs. And so they were setting up something in order for them to take it all together. Is that what you were finding that your own local school system? Why did you get changed so many times?
So the SAT, we were allowed to take all together. We went out on a Wednesday and they just split us up. There were like 10 kids in each classroom, so it was great. I'm choosing to take the ACT because I haven't been like super happy with my SAT scores. And a lot of the schools that I'm applying to don't require them, but I want that merit money. So it's like, I need a good test score. So I'm just taking the ACT just to see how I do and I'll submit it if it's like pretty good. Scarborough doesn't really offer the ACT like, I don't know, it's just never been a big thing. Because usually you need it, you need it more for like schools in the south and things like that. Yeah, it's just not as popular in our area. And I could take it at Bonny Eagle, but I'd have to take it in December. And I want to send my scores to my early, early action schools. So I need it by like November 15.
So this is a follow-up to that, too. I was under the impression that this year, that most of the colleges and universities were saying, we're not interested in your SAT. You're okay because of what you're going through with COVID.
I think that I love the test optional like movement and how that's becoming more and more common. And I'm, I 100% believe that the ACT shows nothing about your intelligence and everything about your ability to take one test. And like I said, most of the schools I'm applying to are test optional. And I've received lots of emails that are like, we're being flexible this year because of, you know, the pandemic. Like it's challenging. But from what I learned watching my sister go through the process, all of her schools are test optional, but she chose to submit her SAT scores because she's intelligent beyond any means and scored like so well in her SATs. And that's how she got her maximum merit money from all of her schools. So that's why I'm choosing to do it. They say they don't care, but it still looks good if you do well.
I think it's 1800 schools that don't, don't require SATs.
But you still can.
And Bates is one of the early ones that decided that.
John.
And the first school to do it in 1966 was Boat.
I'm sorry, Wendy's not here, so I have to say, but Bates was coming right along. I know that's what she'd say.
You wonder why Bates is one of my top choices because last meeting I was with Wendy over at her office. She was talking my ear off when she got here.
And, and Jane's back there saying Kobe, Kobe, Kobe. So I just want you to know.
That's true. That's true. My family's like summer camp is in Oakland. So we're on the same lake where Kobe's nearby. Messalonki. Yep. So I've, I've grown up sort of like admiring Kobe, which is nice. Another challenge with college applications in 2020, I'm supposed to take my home for the next four years without being able to visit. So that's been really interesting because one, I don't have like demonstrated interest at most of my schools other than attending like the Zoom sessions that they've been holding. So God bless my dad. He decided that we would do a day of just like drive-bys at a bunch of schools. And I'm lucky that the University of Maine system finally opened up for tours to seniors. So we are driving it up to Orno again, three hours from where I live. And we're going to do a tour at Orno at like 10:30. And then we're just driving down the state. We're heading like UMF, Bates, Colby, and then kind of we'll land back in Gorham and do USM. So, and that's on Halloween, by the way. So it's gonna be a very spooky college tour day.
Oh, you need, you need to, you need to drive by Lewis and then on Halloween, Peter will.
Please do.
Peter, Peter will give you the secret ingredient to that. It is, it's, it's a tremendously exciting time in a person's life. And, you know, you're, you're exploring all these wonderful options. And, you know, higher it's been, been, you know, my career for, I don't know, 45 years now or more. And, you know, I just, I, it's, I, the enthusiasm that's generated from that process is really something to cherish. And also, thanks for sharing that with us, Casey.
My observation, by the way, is no matter what school you pick, it's the right school. If you do your homework, I have a kid who didn't get into Old Cross and the worst man was very upset, but he went to St. Michael's. And I said to him, all right, week after you get to St. Michael's, I forgot where, where are you applying? And it's true. Whatever direction you go, as long as you study it, it's gonna be the same.
Yeah. And there's, there's something about my community, like, I don't know, something about Scarborough kids where they never want to stay in state. And they never want to go to UMO. There's something wrong with like.
No, that's typical.
I have several, I mean, Julie's at UMO. And I have several friends who wound up at UMO because they just, they just didn't get the money they wanted from other schools. I had a friend who was choosing between Sacred Heart and UMO. And she had never toured UMO. She just applied. It was for safety. She could basically go there for free. But Sacred Heart was her top choice until she toured the campus and realized this is a great place for me to be. And she loves it there. Everybody tells me, they're like, day after graduation, nobody's talking about where anybody's going to school anymore. Nobody's gonna care. So it's something that I try to keep in mind. And yeah. And other things, we just opened our applications for the second student cabinet, which is very exciting. I can talk more about that later during the business meeting. But on a personal note, last year we didn't get any applicants from Scarborough, which was like so disappointing for me. Because Cumberland County had like the majority of the applications. And so for me to be like going through 400 applications and seeing none from my own school district, I was like. This is really sad. Yeah, clearly I didn't like talk about this enough. So this year I was like, I'm not letting that happen again. And I got the link about a week ago and I sent it to my principal right away. I was like, send this out to the staff. Tell them to get it out to a kid. Like we need applicants this year because there were none from Scarborough last year. She was like, I got you. The teachers have been sending it around. And I decided that that wasn't enough because I wanted to reach the middle school and Wentworth because we take fourth grade up. So I built myself explaining what the cabinet was. And it's just a quick video, meaning like, you should really do this. Here's what we talked about. Here's what we do. Here's what it's about. And then I sent it along and I've been getting some great responses from it. The principal down at Wentworth Intermediate has been sharing it with all of her teachers, one of which is my mom. So she played the video for her kids. So I know we're getting applicants from Scarborough this year, which I've done my job and I'm hoping to get that video out to a couple of other schools in the area just so that, you know. I feel like when people just see another email, it's like, oh, I, I don't, I don't really need to do that. It's not for me.
What's the deadline?
October 20. That's what I have to know.
Super Casey. I, I, I kind of like this, having the student members go first. We made.
I know. I feel like you always make.
Like that energy. John Byrd?
Well, basically, my life related to education is consumed by the fact that I'm one of the three people serving on the charter school commission. And we are finding a new executive director. I would never use the term replace Bob Cowes because nobody is ever going to replace the irreplaceable Bob Cowes. He's been wonderful and got this commission off to a great start. He was a wonderful choice for that position. But not to steal Fern's thunder because she's chair of our committee. She and I, Shelley have zoomed our way, I don't know, Fern, how many?
Nineteen.
Nineteen or 20 Zoom meetings. And, but it's been a pleasure working with Fern and Shelley. And we've got, I think, some good candidates coming. They're just coming in now. And we'll be reviewing them next week and we'll see. But that's been most of my life, bad and nursing a bad lower back, which is finally healed. So that I could walk on the parking lot up here today without baby. So anyway, glad to be here. Beautiful day.
Beautiful day indeed. Peter?
During the last month, we pulled together the legislative committee. We just started talking about what's the, what, what the key issues are for each of the committees. We know there'll be 2,000 plus bills coming forward right here, one of the greatest interests to us as a group. Main teacher of the year, but then I'm working with Educate Maine to house the event at my building, Big Tent. Also got the Green Ladle, which is student co-owner has to be the caterer of the event. That's October 24. And there's a group, I think I mentioned it last time, there's a food truck that Green Ladle purchased, which is amazing. And there's a ribbon cutting for that next week. When Green Ladle first opened in 94, in the corner where they made, made National Guard building is, Angus King was there and I was there to do the ribbon cutting. And then they had the bigger building and now they have the food truck. It's just really, really a great program. That is virtually all the Rule 115 meetings. I think they have this amazing job. What I've learned from this whole thing is how challenged, you know, it takes a long time to get the answers to questions because it is so big and so ambiguous at times. And when, when they look at stuff and happen to figure out, okay, what does it really mean? So I can really understand why it takes so long. So I'm hoping in the end that the people who work in the department, first of all, I'm hoping that 80% of the questions are answered and that they're only answering the 20% that are being questioned. But it's, I mean, just hoping it comes out to be clean, clear, simple, understandable. And then I've attended a couple of school construction meetings. And I am working on Halloween. Tonight I am packing 6,500 candy bars. Three giant candy bars per person, but I fear that I'm not going to have nearly enough, even, even with.
Did you decide, yeah, how many?
Well, I got, I got 2,000 bags, which, which is 6,000 candy bars, but I got 6,500 candy bars. I think I need more.
You really needed to be watching Casey's face because her eyes just went wide when you, when you said.
Two, 300 to 25, 200. But anyway, it's something in my neighborhood, which would be cheap to cheap. It's driving into my building and pleasing. And I got a documentary company coming, doing a 10-minute documentary on it.
That's great.
It's always fun, but it's, this one's a challenge.
That, that's great. We look, we look forward to, to the after-action report in November.
Extra candy I'll bring.
We'll make sure there is.
Jana?
That case I'll go in person.
So do I. See, I've been part of the meetings with Chapter 115. They're going well and I hope things continue to go as well as they have been. We've had CTE meeting. And then I went to the conference, the Melmax Conference through Zoom. So I was able, because I don't know enough about computers, I love it. Because what ended up happening, I got to click on and see three different sessions that I wouldn't have been able to do if I knew what I was doing. So I ended up being able to watch the general session and then not being sure what they were. I did go on Melmax Spotlight, they said, which was the college visits in the application process. So I enjoyed really learning something, maybe more for myself, not that I'm going to college, but at least learning what the things are going on right now. And then I did go on to another one, which was what I should have been going to was Manufacturing in Maine. And somehow I missed that one. But anyway, there was another one I went to on FAME. And the work that they're doing, that was amazing with the college, you know, monies that they give out. So it was a very good conference. I think I only stayed on until about 1:30 in the afternoon. So I didn't see the rest of the afternoon. But as usual, they did the good job that they've always done. Let's see, call, just the call. Oh, it was nice to see Dave Daigle from, from the Community College. Since I've been with Dave and since he first came to work for the Community College. And then they honored Amanda Peterson, which I thought was really great. And talked about the work that she's done through the Community College and UTC. That is amazing that a young person could get 42 college credits and still be in high school. I mean, the work that that young woman has done in that program is to me amazing. I just love it. I wish we could see. Of course, I felt very jealous that why isn't SMCC doing the same thing? But that's, that will come. That will come. I think that's probably, then, yeah, I did the college visits with Ed Simone. I didn't even recognize that. With his beard and everything. What the heck is that? But other than that, I think, and then my charter school work that I have done every month. So that's it for me.
That's part of the branding in higher ed, you know, when, when, when you, when you make that shift, you either have to go to a bow tie or.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jana. And let's see, let's, let's, let's go to, let's, let's go to Martha.
Okay. We had two construction meetings since our last board meeting. One was the regular meeting of September 25. The commissioner joined us for that meeting. We talked about the Valley Unified project and we talked, also talked a little bit about ventilation and how we would add perhaps something to our portion of the strategic plan. The second meeting was a special meeting on October 9. And that was primarily about Valley Unified and the letter that is being constructed and will be presented to the board this afternoon. But the highlight of my month was the announcement of the main teacher of the year, Cindy Sewell. It was an outdoor ceremony and it was just fantastic. They started with a fire truck that led this parade of cars, everybody honking and everything else. And then they started having the speakers. And we were very good about being socially distanced and having a clear insights to what would happen. Someone would come up to the podium after every speaker. And we also had our own little microphone covers for any of us who spoke. Cindy will be just a fantastic teacher of the year for 2021. And it's really wonderful to see the culmination of the process that we go through every year. Peter's been involved with it for a lot longer than I have. But it was really wonderful for me to be able to participate in that celebration.
Thanks, thanks, thanks Martha. And my understanding is that's the, 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 the fire truck thing was all built around how they were going to get everyone outside for the surprise. There was a, there was a mock fire drill that they put on. Yeah.
Oh, cute, okay.
Exciting. And hopefully we can, we, we can, we can get her here, maybe in January, early in the, in, in 2021 to, to speak to us. So thanks for, for all of that.
That will be great.
And Fern?
Okay, so since our last state board meeting, it's been very busy, like it was last month, and I'm kind of looking forward to getting back to Augusta because I think there were fewer meetings when I was going to Augusta than being on Zoom. It seems that there are so many, so many meetings now. So the things that I've been involved in since our last state board meeting, certification in higher ed, we had our regular monthly meeting, plus as our deputy commissioner mentioned earlier, we met on October 6th and October 8th to start reviewing the work that's been done with Chapter 115, and that's going along very smoothly. I attended the regular school construction committee meeting, as well as the special meeting that Martha just reported on. We had the, I attended the legislative rulemaking training with Sarah Forster, which I thought was extremely helpful, beneficial. I really liked the things that she brought to our attention and just reinforcing some of the things that we already knew as well, all, all very much worth my time. As John mentioned, the charter commission work has been keeping us extremely busy with the, the search for the executive director as Bob leaves us. So in the last month, we had six meetings for planning purposes. We had a, a regular charter commission meeting and a special meeting because of the executive director search and looking at that job description and finalizing it. We also, and you're going to hear more about this from Jana this afternoon, we had public hearings for two, two charter schools that they be renewed, and that was the Main Arts Academy and Acadia, September 29th and 30th respectively. I'm the liaison for Fiddlehead School of Arts and Sciences, and it's also a very big treat. On Saturday mornings, they have their regular meetings and their board of directors are just exceptional. And so I thoroughly enjoy listening in to their meetings. That was September 19th for the month of September. And then yesterday I began listening to the sessions with NAXA's Leadership Conference taking place. It started yesterday and it's going to go on from October 13th to the 29th, but it's all, only on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons and one Friday afternoon, which will be next week. So that's, that, that's extremely interesting. Aside from these, I'll now move on to NASB. And with NASB, we had our regular office hours on September 10th. And there we talked about legislation, congressional action, the reopening of schools throughout the United States. So the different participants were able to share what was going on in their states. We had two board of directors meetings, September 16th and 29th. And I have not been sending you my minutes or the official minutes. And I will send those to you later today or tomorrow, and we'll explain in a few minutes why I wasn't forwarding them. There was a NASB webinar on assessment and accountability systems with the authors of NASB's. Our chair last month told us about this issue coming out, and the September issue focuses on assessment. Three of the authors were part of that webinar, and so they talked about assessments during this pandemic, schools reopening, the opportunities and challenges that are ahead for school leaders in regards to assessments. It was a very good session. And let's see, one, two, so that was four NASB events. Lastly, with NASB, I want to talk to you about the conference that's going to start next week. So Tuesday is the new member institute from 1 o'clock to 4:15. All of you are invited to participate. It's free to participate. All you need to do is let Mary know you want her to register you and you can be part of that. They will focus on parliamentarian procedures, among other things, and I think it's going to be very interesting. Then on Wednesday, we move to the regular portion of the conference. So Wednesday from 1 to 6, there will be different sessions, there will be, that you can participate in. 5:15 to 6 o'clock will be the awards ceremony, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Thursday from 1 to 6 again, you'll have a number of sessions to choose from. Friday, October 23rd, the only piece you would participate in is from 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock, and that's the Northeastern Area Meeting. Besides that, there'll be from 4 to 6, I will be participating on the delegate assembly and the annual business meeting, and Martha will be part of that because she will report out on GAC during that period of time. I remind you, as I had mentioned at our last regular meeting, the cost to participate in the NASB conference is only $125. And I was checking last evening, I saw that our chair was registered, Martha's registered, Sarah Forster will be participating, and myself. So there will be four from Maine participating. You know, when can you attend the national conference for $125? It probably has never happened. So if you're interested in participating, please let Mary know. She was very helpful in registering me and she will gladly register any of you. So I said I was going to come back to the awards ceremony and I just received an email at 11:34 just a few minutes ago, that it's now public information. It's been released to our papers that our chair will be receiving the distinguished service award, award. And there are three recipients from the United States. So Wilson Hess will be one of the recipients, Mississippi has one, and Guam will be receiving the third one. So I wish to congratulate our chair for receiving the award. In the announcement, they refer to his work that he's done with higher education, and we all know that he's been with higher education for a number of years and president of the University of Maine at Fort Kent, amongst other places, other campuses. His work with career in technical education, the school construction work he's done, and his advocacy for expanding internet access. Those are all mentioned in the article. And John Byrd, you will be interested in knowing that they have quoted you in the article as saying of Wilson, "He enables me to be more effective as a board member. He understands the politics of education and the framework of education in Maine. He attends to details while focusing on a broader vision to make something better happen." So again, I encourage everyone to participate in the awards ceremony, which will be held next Wednesday, October 21, from 5:15 to 6 o'clock. And Wilson at that time will be honored. And again, congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yeah, that's right. Peter says we'll get a fire truck. Thank you, Fern. And I want to thank, you know, you and, and, and Martha and John and anyone else that's been part of that. I, I think in many ways, you know, these awards are testimonials to the people we work with, as much as they are testimonials about us. But thank you for, for, for all of that. And I'm, I'm truly humbled. And I like to quote Theodore Roosevelt about such things, but it's an aspiration, not something I think I've lived up to. Many years ago, Theodore Roosevelt said the best, and he was talking about executives, is the person who has enough sense to peep, to pick good people to do what they want to have done, and the restraint enough to keep from meddling with them while they do it. And I, I certainly think that it reflects the work of the people I work with. Whether or not I have the self-restraint to keep from meddling is up for debate.
I think TR was challenged on that conversation.
Yeah, I think he was too, yes. But thank you very, very much. And enough said on that department, and we'll move to our.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add that, you know, the, the secretary for NASB had sent an email back on July 14th, and so we were having a state board meeting on July 15th, and she had impressed upon the directors to let their, their boards know that, you know, her exact words were, "There are many deserving of recognition for their dedication to children." And then she goes on to say, "Please share the following." And, you know, there, I looked around at our state board and absolutely there were people very deserving of this award. And, you know, where we get so caught up, we're busy with other things that we do that sometimes we forget to take the time to let people be recognized. And I certainly see other people around our board that are worthy of recognition, and I have every intention next year to nominate someone in, on the current board. People do above and beyond all the time, and when you recognize one, you're really recognizing other people around that are doing some of the same things. You can't recognize them all, but it, it's great that the state of Maine can be, can be taking the time to recognize some of its very worthy members. And again, next year, we will continue.
That sounds like a, like a promise. That's good. Thank you, Fern. And, and Jane, you can, you can roll things into your vice chair's report, or you can roll them off to this report as you wish.
Two short reports during the board report, I will tell some of the social aspects. My husband went up and I went up to Sugarloaf and he talked to his boss about how it was they were going to try to keep the instructors safe teaching skiing. I also connected with our former board member, Elise McHenry. She is a sophomore at Arno, but Zooming her classes. She is doing an internship at Sugarloaf in business administration. She's changed her major from bio, which I think in the present case of Zooming all classes, that it's a lot better. And as usual, she's taking many courses and excelling in them all. So it's always fun to connect with former board members. And this afternoon, I will tell about some of my official meetings. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jane. I think this was a pretty engaging board member's report. Thank you all for that. And if we could take just a few minutes running up to the, to the 12 o'clock hour, we, we have an opportunity to, to talk about the 2021 action plan that's been distributed in draft form. But there are three items that we talked about last time that aren't in that draft that you received, and I wanted to be able to, to get any input from the group as to whether or not you think these rise up to things we, beyond those things we want to pay attention to, to things we want to make part of the, of the action plan. And the first one relates to a comment that Martha made earlier about her committee that had a discussion about the school ventilation in, in particular, as part of both something that should be within, be on the radar of our school construction committee, and perhaps something we want to advocate for, for, for funding. And we do have built into our rule, consideration of design aspects for heating, cooling, and, and ventilation. But in the COVID environment, ventilation seems to be a whole lot more important. So Martha, would you help us define that a little bit better, how we might include it in the action agenda?
Unmute. The, the committee believes that it is very important that we advocate for the inclusion of better ventilation systems. There is a provision in our current rule that talks about ventilation, and Scott had shared that with the committee. Peter also shared with the committee what his building is doing in terms of special ventilation. So I believe that we do want to include in our portion of the action plan, something that specifically talks about advocating for the funding of better ventilation systems, particularly in our older buildings.
And, and thank you, because that's why I had increased funding for, for, for school ventilation, and I like advocacy. So advocate for improved ventilation and funding for it. Anyone want to comment on that?
I would say, I would say that obviously ventilation is important because of COVID.
Right.
Once COVID is, is solved, it may not be as important. The issue right now is trying to find ventilation materials because hospitals and everybody else are buying these things.
Right.
And then in my building, which was renovated three or four years ago, which has a great system, we were looking at all the pilot rays, but you can't even get those for a year. So there's two or three things here. Yes, I think we should be advocating for it. I think also in new facilities, we want to be sure that whatever systems they have are really good systems. In old buildings, you maybe open the windows for a while, but I just want, I want to say, you can't just go out and buy ventilation systems for all these buildings because it is really complicated. But I think we want to advocate for it because it is a necessity, not because, just because of COVID, but that's what's driving it right now. Once COVID is behind you, it all of a sudden will not be as, it'll be an issue, but it won't be quite an issue. But I do think we have a case for it. Good point.
Good. Further comments? Okay, Martha may or may not be with us for that part of the discussion because she has an impromptu court session coming up this afternoon. So, so we're going to try, I'm going to try to focus the language, Martha, on, on advocacy for improved ventilation and funding for, for school ventilation. Is that where you would like to go?
Yes, but I believe that Jane was interested in broadening that somewhat. Jane, do you want to talk about that?
Mute, Jane, mute.
Now, sorry about that.
Oh.
I hope, no, no red by my name now. Sorry about that. That I'm always an advocate for, and it can be somewhat tied to ventilation, is cooling systems that I think will probably be doing more thinking about year-round school and, or different semesters for education. And I think the construction committee needs to, in our own discussions, do some forward thinking as far as just how buildings are built.
Yep. Okay, so, so what we'll be working on when we get to the business portion of the meeting is, is probably dealing with some language to try to wrap all those things in. Okay? That's good. And, and, you know, Martha, if you have any thoughts, you know, if you could shoot out an email to us, that would be great. And otherwise, we'll probably look to Peter and Jane to help us craft that. And maybe over the lunch break, anything that you all want to jot down would be great. The next two items are, are coming, again, coming out of the discussion we had at the last meeting, related to our, our student members, I'm sorry, take that back. One of those items is related to student members, and we talked about an internal goal of an, of an orientation for student members. In my notes, I had just put that on my to-do list, but I want to raise the question to all of you, and I, heads up Casey, because I'm going to start with you, as to whether or not that becomes an action agenda item that we want to raise to that level, so that we, we want to be sure we check off that box at that level. we check off that box at, at that level of, of organizational priority. So I'm going to let you take the first shot at that. It's already on my to-do list. Do we want to put it on the action agenda?
First of all, thank you for putting it on the to-do list. I think that it should be on the action agenda just because it's something that's been missing for so long. And while it's nice to, like, Wilson has his mind on it for now, I think that it's important that we, like, take the time to develop, like, what do we want our students to be able to do? And then how do we, as a board, like, fully educate them to do that? It shouldn't just be a quick, like, Wilson decides what we need to, you know, know and that happens. I think it should be an important conversation that we have.
Good, good feedback. Anyone else want to react to that?
I agree with what you said.
And I got some head nods here, so.
Yeah, I look at it as a procedural thing that you have a new student and they.
It was like one company.
Well, yeah, but you're going to get one at a time. You essentially get one at a time. You're not going to get three new board.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think it's more, to me, it's more of a procedural thing with the chair and the vice chair meet with the student and sit down and explain things and so on down. As opposed to the board coming up with a whole plan. Everybody's a little bit different. I think it should need to be procedural. I think it should be a listen because it's procedural. That when somebody starts, that there's a process they go through. Usually it's the chair and the vice chair, but then maybe, maybe the commissioner that, that orient them.
No, that doesn't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure. I, I don't recall orientation. Now, we, you and I went down to Washington for an orientation. All the baseball games, most of the time we were there, but.
Yeah, shush, 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 shush. You were sworn to secrecy. I bought you a beer. That's enough.
No, but the point is, I don't recall, I was welcomed. I was warmly welcomed when I came to my first meeting. And I have been around the block a little bit, so I know a little bit about how groups work. But still, I think it's something that anybody that's new coming on should have a. And I, but I agree with what, well, with what Peter said. I think the notion of the leadership just, just reaching out in some way.
Yeah.
Well, I think when I, when I was on to the 90s, I forget what happened. But when I came back, it was like three or four people. And so there was a dog and pony show of every, every aspect, everybody in the department presenting to this group of three or four people. We, but we also had a time when we had one or two new people that came on. We decided to do it each month. So we did it a little bit differently. It wasn't a sit-down. It's hard to do a sit-down with one or two people and have everybody in the department present in my opinion.
A lot of time.
But we've done, we've done it two different ways. Ideally, if you had. Oh, you, you may, you may have a point where Jan is replacing, you have a new person that maybe filled the extra spot and you get three or four people. Then you, then you want to have a full day. So I mean, it was Steve Pound, as I recall, when I first started, that did a very nice job. So I think it needs to be determined. We need to do it, but it needs to be.
So, so what I'm hearing is the conversation is, is expanded beyond just orientation for student members, but a process for orientation for regular members. So I'm, I'm going to try to come up with some compromise language to share with you later today around developing a process for orientation for student members and for regular members. And we'll, we'll identify both groups.
That's why you're getting an award.
Yeah, right. Okay. So, good. And, and there were two other items that we talked about. One was bond funding. We have, I think, four different bond funding issues that, that we discussed. I'm hoping that we've got that covered. The other was looking at our student transfer appeal process. And my notes suggested that we talked about that, but didn't raise it to, to, to the level of, of an action agenda item. But I'll ask, do you want the student transfer appeal process to become an action agenda item? For the most part, the only way we can really affect change in that is through the legislative process. But.
But that's, I think we can do a lot more than that because to me, it's been the most frustrating thing that we had to take on. And we have no criteria when we go into a meeting other than what's in the best interest of a child. And we've had, why can't we, as, as a committee, at least put together something of a policy in terms of the way we look at things? We've never done it and it drives me crazy.
Don't throw Bear, Bear Rilson to that briar patch. Boy, that's, that's a great one, Jan. So, Casey?
Um, I've brought this up before and I don't know if this is like the appropriate time or place, but I, I still want to know why student members can't be there. I know that the whole, like, the way, the way Wendy explained to me was it's executive session, what, whatnot. And students might know the other student that creates like a conflict interest. But couldn't that go for anybody else on board? So why are we excluded from executive session? Is that in the statute?
No, it's guidance from, from the Assistant Attorney General, who, who gives us advice on, on that.
So.
And it has to, it has to do with, with the, the federal act that we deal with called FERPA.
So in looking into changing this process, is there any way? I, I guess, not just out of, you know, I'm interested in like steeping into the lives of these other students who, I mean, I don't even know what the process is. It's really aggravating when I don't know how long that portion of the meeting is going to go on for. So I just would follow Jaylee's lead and executive session and start and I'd leave. But then I'm missing like the whole end portion of the meeting after that. So it's, it's, it makes me feel very like disjointed and I don't know if that's the right word. But it's frustrating. So I have to like have them leave. And I know like when my local school board goes into executive session, the student members stay and they're voting members.
There's a difference.
So we're frustrated. We're frustrated. You're frustrated, but for different reasons. We'd like to get out of it. We'd like to get into it. We, we.
What, I guess I want to know because I'm, I'm just not as involved in this aspect. But you say rework the process. What, what would that look like ideally? You no longer have a role?
That's, that's the goal. The goal is, is to get out of the gig to begin with. And we've gone back and I've testified and trying to get clarity on, on what's in the best interest of the student. And nobody can really tell you. It was a political, it was a political handpicking effort because at one time the commissioner was, was either allowing it or just, he was approving.
Proving like 80 to 90 a year.
And so the legislature says, well, we're going to get around that one if the state board do it. So we don't approve everything, but quite frankly, we're trying to get away from it. It's not a joyous event to, to, to attend.
I guess I don't understand.
I think a piece of it is though, because you're not a voting member. And that's the, if you were a voting member, then absolutely you would be.
So. So, let, let, let me give you what the AG's office has said. Okay, we're dealing with the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1973 as amendment, also known as the Buckley Act. Okay, I've been doing Buckley Act for a long, long time. And it protects the privacy, okay, of, in this case, we're talking about people who are under 18. And, and it has restrictions upon what you can do with that. And one of them is we can't have other people that are under 18 be part of that process according to the Assistant Attorney General. And we can get.
You can't tell that frustration.
We, we, I, I understand the frustration. We can get further clarification on that. But she's been, she's been rather clear about that.
We're all frustrated.
I guess that's what I was confused about because I'm, I'm very close with, his name's Max. He's the, he's the senior representative for our local school board. I was like, Max, you can vote? He was like, yeah, we're, we're normal members. I was like, I don't understand. I was told that I can't vote at the state level because I can't vote in general.
You can't, you, you can't vote, you, you can't vote as a member of the board because that's in statute. That's in Maine statute. That the student members are, are not voting members. I happen to be an advocate of getting rid of that.
Me too.
Right, because I feel like if I'm.
But, but we're.
I'm a governor and approved by the Senate, then why isn't there some sort of special?
But I'm also not, I'm also not an advocate for, for a whole other reason. So there's, there's a two sides to this.
Right, that's correct. But that's where I was going to try to, to say there. We don't have a consensus in our board on that particular issue. But, you know, that's a discussion we can have. But, but, but if that is to be changed, it's beyond our purview. It's, it's within purview of, of statute.
So what happens with the Buckley versus her schools board who allows it?
I guess I want to know why that's different at the local.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm presuming that students aren't allowed to vote on, on things that affect other individual students, individual students, not, not policy.
So according to Skirborough Public Schools' own policy on student school board representation, BBAB, it says that representatives serve as non-voting members, although, and this is from my own experience, this is where it can get confusing. Although their vote by a show of hands would be encouraged and documented formally. So it appears like they're voting, but their.
That makes better sense.
Doesn't count, which may be part of the confusion part. So they're raising their hand probably to show their support or non-support of something.
Okay. But then it came down to it.
It doesn't count.
Okay.
Okay. Second part, and it says in here, I can, I don't know, you probably know where your board policies are. But the second part says, representatives will attend business and workshop meetings and also be assigned to participate on standing committees. They will act as liaisons between the board and student body. They'll be excluded from executive session.
Apparently I'm throwing my own school dish in the bucket there.
That's their policy.
Yeah, I, and, and I, and I do want to be, you know, conscious of our, of our timeframe. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to defray any further discussion. I'm not trying to cut you off, Casey. We've got a business session this afternoon. I was trying to get to where the consensus stuff was and, and we can pick this up again. So especially for those that are on Zoom, I want you to know that, you know, at 12 o'clock, although it's 12 past now, we take lunch break. We come back and convene our, our regular business session at 1 o'clock. So you can sign off or, but we're going to go up there and come back a little bit before 1. We'll get you in so that we can do a 1 o'clock start. So thanks very much for being with us. And we'll see many if not most of you at 1 o'clock. Appreciate it. And Martha, I understand you're going to be in court part of the time. And just join us when you can. I'll assume you said okay. Good. Okay, we'll see everyone at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
So is this, is this like, I'm going to spend some time on this one. I am so worried about what's going to happen in the next, so I just leave the session.
Okay, Grayson is coming in and then the two parents.
Mm-hmm. And we have Jane in the firm.
Yes.
And we do not yet have Wendy.
No.
Okay.
Okay. University of Maine.
So you're ready to go live?
Yeah. Give me one second. Oh, there's Wendy.
Okay, there you go.
She's very, very good.
Yeah.
And Vicki.
Very good.
Jessica.
I don't know why she does that. I don't know why she does so many. God bless her. She muted.
She's on this rule.
And John.
Hey, everyone. Hi, Mary.
Hi, Wendy, welcome.
Hey, Wendy.
Oh, there's Grayson. Hi, Grayson.
Hello.
Okay, we're good, Mary.
So Grayson's.
I think so. Because of so many people. Right? Good.
Good afternoon. I call the October meeting of the State Board of Education to order. And I'm obliged to start with a statement. This meeting is conducted in accordance with Section G-1 of 1 MRSA, Section 403-A, Public Proceedings Through Remote Access During Declaration of State of Emergency Due to COVID-19. Whereas the meeting is open to the public, all votes will be taken by roll call. And we'll now call on our secretary to call the roll.
Wilson has.
There.
Jane Sexton.
Mike.
She's working on it. She's working on it. Yes, here. Sorry, I'm not quick enough.
Wendy Alt.
I'm here with my sunglasses on because I had my eyes dilated. So I feel the need to tell you why I'm wearing sunglasses.
Looks very stylish.
John Byrd.
Here.
Fern DeJardins.
Here.
Peter Geiger.
You.
Martha Harris. Jim. Joel Point. Jay Lee Rice. Casey Madder.
Here.
Chair declares a quorum to be present. Chair would take one item of privilege and note that we have a young gentleman with us from Maine Math and Science Academy, who it has been announced has been selected to become our next student member to the board to fill the vacant seat that we currently have. Of course, he cannot take his seat formally until he has been confirmed by the legislature. But we're glad to have him with us today. And would you identify yourself to everyone, please?
Hi, my name is Grayson Orin. I attend the Maine School of Science and Mathematics up here in Limestone. And I'm excited to get working.
And do I understand correctly, Grayson, that you are a resident of the Camden area?
Yes, I am.
Well, welcome aboard. And I know it's been a busy day for you. My understanding is you've been taking PSATs all morning. Hope you're well rested from that. Just so that everyone knows, the State Board of Education has two student members. It's a very selective process that we've been through. And we're very pleased that the governor has selected Grayson. And I'm sure if he can stay with us through the meeting, both Fern and Wendy will say some things about him later in the meeting. Next item of business is reading of our vision statement. And Grayson, I will warn you that one of the expectations we have of our student representatives is that they read the mission, the vision statement at the beginning of each meeting to help focus our attention. And Casey, I would ask that you do that for us today.
All right. The vision of the State Board is to ensure Maine public school students graduate with the skills, knowledge, and principles to be responsible American citizens, self-directed and dedicated to making contributions to society by pursuing further education and employment.
Thank you very much, and I hope those words help to focus our work and our discussion today. Item four, minutes of the last meeting of September 9th, 2020. The chair would entertain a motion.
So will Jana Point.
Jana, make the motion. And second from John Byrd. Are there any additions, deletions?
I just have a question, a clarification.
Wendy Alt, yeah.
Um, I saw when I was reading the minutes, I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly. But did you say, Jana, that the charter schools have a waitlist of 1,000 students? Over 1,000 students?
They did, yes.
Okay, that's I, it didn't resonate with me the same way it did when I read it on paper. That's amazing.
I don't know, we've been that way almost since day one.
But it's virtual schools.
But it's basically the virtual schools that have the logic. But every one of our schools has had a waiting list.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for the question, Wendy. Other questions, comments, additions, deletions, editorial remarks? Hearing none, all those in favor? Call the roll.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Wilson has.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern DeJardins.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Martha Harris. Jana Point.
Yes.
So motion carries. So move on to public comment. I note that the State Board meetings are public meetings. At this point in the meeting, we offer the opportunity for public comment on any topic. Comment is limited to three minutes. And we do not engage in discussion or dialogue or debate about these items, but this is an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to bring a matter to our attention to speak. I will note that later in the agenda, we have an opportunity to discuss student transfer appeals. And parents, members of school boards, and legal counsel for anyone involved in student transfer appeals can speak at this time. I would also inform those people that they have an opportunity to speak in executive session under the public comment rule when we get to that. So that the identities of the students involved and the particulars aren't available generally to the viewing public. So with that said, is there anyone who would like to make public comment at this point of the meeting? Seeing and hearing none, we will proceed. There's one other item related to public comment that I think all participants should be aware of. One of the entities listed on the Zoom meeting says WFKT. That is the local cable broadcast company in Fort Kent, Maine. There's, they've been broadcasting this morning's workshop and this afternoon's meeting. And so I want all participants to be aware that this is being rebroadcast in that area. We'll now proceed with the reports of officers. I will begin with the chair's report. I want to remind members of the board that today we have several substantive items of business. We'll be reviewing our 2021 action agenda. And I want to remind board members that the latest version of that was transmitted earlier this morning. And so you may want to check your email if you haven't already brought that up. There are several items that at a work session this morning, we identified that we might wish to add, and so we'll be talking about those moving forward. Another item is University of Maine CAPE review, which is an accrediting review of their teacher certification program. The team will be appointed today. And that is an exception to the general moratorium that we have on reviews of teacher education programs during the COVID crisis. But this is a national accrediting review, and they set the timing for that. And so we will be appointing the team that participates in that. We'll also be taking action on a communication related to the integrated and consolidated district governance around a potential new school in the St. John Valley and some of the governance-related issues that we're providing notice on in conjunction with the State Department of Education. And aside from those matters, I would simply call your attention, board members, to a communication that we shared with you last week, I believe, from MEPRE related to work at the College of Education and Human Development at the University of Maine that provides support for both educators and family in the area of social emotional learning, student well-being, and trauma-informed practices. I refer you to the website listed in that communication for additional information. That concludes my report to the board. And if there are no questions, I'll turn to the vice chair for the vice chair's report. Jane.
Thank you. Again, basic board activities. CTE committee meeting on September 24th. The construction committee met September 25th and then again October 9th. Attended the Zoom rulemaking with Sarah on September 30th. Had the agenda review and the Melmac, which some other people have talked about. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Enjoyed seeing Brian Langley since we had a lot of communication with him while he was in the legislature and his education on the Bridge Academy and his functioning as executive director. At noontime, I thought there were some helpful hints for everyone during the COVID time is for people to stay calm. And mentioned, the presenter said, teachers want to feel happy, inspired, valued, supportive, affected, and respected. And one hint was for teachers that when they start the Zoom session with their students, to say one word and you could maybe get a feel of how your class is interpreting things that day. And they keep stressing about being resilient. One hint was to breathe calmly, and that would calm down your nervous system. Suggestion for adolescents to be involved in civic activities and feel good. And I felt her conversation or presentation with how to be effective, keep yourself together, keep your class together during the time of COVID. I thought her presentation was very effective. So that was basically my most recent activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. We'll proceed with the reports of standing committees. Typically, school construction is first. And I note that the chair was called into a previously unscheduled court session. But I believe at this point, two members of the committee, Peter Geiger and Fern DeJarden, can bring us up to date on the activities. And I'll leave it to the two of you to divide those responsibilities as you see best fit.
Fern is a great note taker. I know we had two committee meetings. Fern, what do you want to say?
I do take notes all the time, but my binder is not quite with me because I thought Martha would report out. So just hold on a second.
Peter, would you like to talk about any Halloween activities while we're ready? No, thank you.
No more publicity.
Okay, so we met on September 25th. And at that meeting, what we took up was the Integrated Consolidated 9 through 16 Educational Facility Program. Had a discussion about that and the major capital school construction program where things were at with that. We talked about something that was pointed out this morning about ventilation and looking at monies being available for energy, heating, cooling, and ventilation systems in our schools, which because of the pandemic is bringing us to have a consideration for this and looking at the health and safety of our students and staff. So that was the September 25th meeting, October 9. What we did is review the draft letter to the Valley Unified Educational Service Center. We made some edits to that letter. And the version that we were sent this morning is the most updated version of the decisions that were made at that meeting and the letter for which we will vote on this afternoon.
Thank you, Fern. Peter, any?
She does such a good job.
Let the record show that Fern does such a good job. That's good.
Thank you, Peter.
By the way, the issue of air conditioning and so forth, I think the first school we ever air conditioned was the Connor Elementary School. And we paid for either one-third or two-thirds and the town paid the other portion. And it was because they have 600 students going to summer school. So it was a compelling reason to air condition. Otherwise, we air conditioned computer labs and administrative spaces because they're there all summer. I think the whole issue of, it's not just air conditioning. It's, there's other forms of climate control. Because something to have air conditioning, it's something to pay for it and have it running and all the other things. So that's a, that's a decision I think the committee needs to look at when we're talking about new schools. But I just want to say that we have an air conditioner all the schools. It would be nice if we did. It'd also be nice if we went to school year round. But there's a lot of, a lot of pieces to that puzzle. But I do think ventilation certainly and climate control and so forth. And I think there's a school, I think it's Westbrook Middle School, has a great ventilation system where it takes the air and it moves it off the sides and then, you know, you're less sick or whatever. But anyway, I think it's something the committee is going to wrestle with in the future. But I'm also going to be wary that the state's not going to have a great deal of money to just parcel out just in the next, probably the next two or three years. So we want to be careful about what we do, but we want to be thoughtful. There are ways to do things without spending.
Thank you, Peter. Anything further from school construction? We'll now turn to certification and higher education. And before I call on Wendy Alt, I simply want to acknowledge the extraordinary work that this committee has been doing, scheduling additional special meetings to deal with the rule on Chapter 115, which relates to teacher certification. Wendy and all members of certification and higher education, I want to thank you for the extraordinary work that you're doing and the extremely ambitious calendar you have to try to bring this forward in a timely manner. So thank you, Wendy, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'll just reinforce that by saying thank you to Jana and Fern for being so flexible. And I really also appreciate that Peter Geiger is making himself available for as much as many of the meetings as his schedule allows. So I think that's really important. And then you also, Mr. Chair, have participated in the two meetings that we've had thus far. I, having been a fly on the wall this morning, I want you to know that there's little doubt that I could say anything to, different from what Dan has reported to you. As you know, we have met twice and we focused on administration and then ed specialists. And we have two meetings scheduled next week. So I know he gave a very comprehensive overview and I appreciate that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I'm happy to have Jana and Fern weigh in as well.
Fern?
The only thing I would say, and it complements what John Bird said to our deputy commissioner this morning. You know, it's really great that we're having these presentations done to, presented to the committee at this time. Along the way, we have four sessions to go over the different certifications. This is a much better process than having shown up at a state board meeting one month and we would have had the materials ahead of time to look at. But it's not like you've already had a committee of our members of the state board listening, asking questions, buying into the process, and providing an opportunity for feedback. I will feel very differently when we get to the meeting where we take a vote this year as opposed to the meeting that this was brought in front of us. And I remember sitting next to Jana and I remember questioning our commissioner and then saying to Jana, I'm not going to be able to vote in favor of this because of the way it was being presented. I could tell that there were lots of reservations. I think when it's presented this time, you're going to have a good group of people supporting what's been done by a good cross-section of people throughout the state of Maine. And it's not teachers only, but all the people involved with Chapter 115, their certification process. So I commend the leadership that has taken charge of this, our deputy commissioner and, you know, the professional standards board and Peter being a member of that committee and representing us well on that committee as well. So again, what John said this morning was right on target. And I think we're going to have a very different outcome this time around, which is a very good thing.
Thank you, Fern. Jana? You fine? Wendy, may I ask if we could very briefly introduce folks to the University of Maine review team process? I know you'll want to deal with that in more detail later.
No, should we just do it now?
If you could just mention, you know, who the team will be and what the Cape review is about?
I believe all of you have a memo in your packet from the Commissioner of Education. And the University of Maine is scheduled for a Cape review, which is a national organization to review the teacher preparation program. And you might remember that we've discussed having a hiatus given the confines of COVID. But Cape, being of national stature, required us to make an exception and the program will be reviewed in December. And so a team has been named and you'll see it in your memo. And I believe Mr. Chair will be voting on that later.
That's correct. Thank you very much, Wendy. And that's exhibit Roman numeral eight A for those of you who want to queue it up later. Thank you very much, Wendy.
When you have a, this is a joint effort, national end?
Yes, so the question is, you know, how does this joint effort work?
Is it different?
Yeah, by written agreement between the Department of Education and Cape. Cape forms its team to come and review the standards of national accreditation. But there are, I believe it's two items that are in the Maine review that are not on Cape. And so we add members to that team. In this case, it will be two faculty members from other Cape accredited schools in Maine and a board reviewer so that they can observe the entire process, but in particular so that they can do the review on those two issues which we have jurisdiction on.
Just a little different, but it's good. It's good for the school because now they're getting that whole.
That's correct. And that's why we try to coordinate the timing so it all happens at the same time. Very good question, Peter. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, we will proceed to career and technical education. John Bird?
Thank you. So several months ago, of course, we, last year, we initiated a program to support with Perkins funding pilot programs in grades nine and 10. Those were well underway and then COVID hit and everything. We all know what that's done to the third world upside down in several different ways. Those programs are going to be finished up and reports will be forthcoming by the end of this calendar year. We had, at that time, hoped to do this for more than one year because to do the ninth and 10th grade years are really important entry-level years and there was strong support for continuing those programs. However, now, of course, the whole financial picture has changed. And so we, at our last meeting this past month in September, and having talked to Rob Callahan, who's the president, the chair of the board of MACD, still seeking their new executive director, they have not completed that process yet. In talking with Rob and inviting him to come to our meeting along with four other reps from CTE who are there each month, we had a very robust discussion about how can we help? We don't know how much money we're going to have for next year, but roughly, probably in the neighborhood of $300-plus thousand. We have some breaks funding that could also help. But basically, we said, look, we want to support CTE. We don't want to say you got to do nine and 10 again if that's not the best way to use that money. So we had a long discussion about their funding needs. And it was very edifying because it's complicated. Because as we all know, the CTE programs are not set up the same throughout the state of Maine. We have regions and we have centers. And they operate differently in the whole funding and availability of funding. And I don't pretend to understand it all in depth. All I know is, and the relationships that the directors have with the school superintendents varies. And so there are a lot of complicating factors. So we had a good discussion. It remains open. We'll be coming back to it this month. And we'll know more, of course, by the end of the year, how much funding will be available. But we, I think as a committee, and again, Jana, Wendy, others who are part, and Jane, who are part of the committee can weigh in. But we still want to do what we can to support CTE. We know supplies are a big need for all of them. But the accessibility of funding differs among the 27 centers, 27 programs. And that's a little bit disturbing to us, but you know, it is what it is. We just want to help in any way we can. And we hope that the superintendents throughout the state of Maine, who are the key in this whole discussion, will be as empathetic as possible to this program, the CTE program, which is so important for the state of Maine, workforce development, is so critical. Jana or Wendy or Jane want to add anything to that?
Thank you. You've done a great job, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, Dan?
I get the honor of signing off approval letters to schools that are adding new programs, which is exciting. And I've just seen a few of them come through recently, which is always nice to see. They're adding new programs to their site. Kind of congratulate them in their letter for even just taking a bold move of adding a new program to their school. But I've seen a few of those come through recently. It's just great to see that thriving. You know, the programs may be adjusting, but they're adding new ones.
Well, we have so much admiration for CTE. I've learned a lot in the years I've been on this board. And we have our wonderful new center, our new region, today in Long Island. We're so proud of that too, so.
And Dan, it's good to hear because that process is really a year-long process of developing and having it reviewed and moved and moving forward. And the state board has been encouraging, especially as John said, the ninth and 10th grade programs. I'm hoping a few of those you've signed off on this fall, the ninth and 10th grade programs, because we think that's an important addition. Good to know. Thank you. John, can we presume that it's likely, given the timeframe for pushing this stuff out, that maybe in November we'll see some recommendation on how your committee wishes to?
I think we helped and tried to do that, yes.
Good. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions related to the CTE report? Legislative Action Committee, Peter Geiger?
We had one meeting on September 26th and we discussed with Wilson's help, put together a number of areas that are interesting to the committee chairs. And when the legislature comes together, the new legislature comes together, we know that there'll be thousands of bills and we're going to focus on some of the areas that are of greatest interest to each committee. And so, I mean, we will look at everything that relates to education, as we always have. But there's an area that specifically of keen interest. So in view of all the other meetings that are going on, we're not having multiple meetings until it becomes time to, you know, ratchet it up a little bit now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Peter. The prep work in advance of the legislative session, so very important. Thank you and your colleagues for that. Our ad hoc committees, Student Voice. And we've kept student membership on here, Fern, because even though you all have discharged your duties, you know, you have someone special here today. So let's start with Student Voice and Wendy can lead us into that discussion.
As I often do, I defer to the students on the state board. And so I will hand it over to Casey in just one minute. But I'm pleased to tell you that the commissioner is re-energizing her student cabinet. And my understanding from Rachel, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the commissioner would like to have monthly meetings with the students, especially during the pandemic, so that she has a close understanding of how students are viewing their education and takes the opportunity to find out if there's ways that she might be able to help facilitate that virtual learning in particular. But so Casey, I'm happy to have you speak on behalf of the Student Voice. Give an update. I know you're very involved with Rachel and the meeting dates, making sure they're on your calendar.
Yep. So thanks, Wendy. Yes, as Wendy mentioned, we're taking applications for the second student cabinet. And I've been in close contact with Rachel discussing mine and Suzy Grayson's role in that whole process. Our goal is to be in Augusta sometime soon so we can be part of the review process of those applications and sort of the part in choosing the members of the cabinet. We have considered keeping some of our members from the previous year because we're still not sure, you know, how long the term is, I suppose, on the cabinet, something that we have yet to think about. And then Rachel and I have been talking about how Grayson and myself can be more part of the discussion on what the agenda looks like for each of the meetings and how we can be more in that facilitator role rather than just like another member. Because the whole point was that it's student-led and upcoming meetings as well.
Thank you. Casey, back to you, Wendy?
Nope, I'm happy to join Fern in welcoming, who we hope will be a new member of the state board in the student capacity. But as Fern has been characterized by Peter as a great note taker and pays close attention to detail, I will turn it over to Fern to introduce Grayson.
Okay, so yes, welcome, Grayson, to your first unofficial state board of education meeting. It's great to have you today, even though we acknowledge that you haven't been confirmed yet. You will need to appear in front of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee and then confirmation will come from the Senate. But we are very optimistic that all of that will take place and we are just very apologetic that the pandemic came and things got postponed and things are not official at this point. But thank you for taking the time today to join us anyway. And just a few things that I remember about Grayson is that he's always eager to learn. He has a strong work ethic, very respectful in the interview. And I remember one of his teachers mentioning that in her letter as well, how respectful he is, very conscientious, so we can expect him to show up at state board meetings. And if I remember correctly, Grayson wants to be a pilot. Is that still the case, Grayson?
Yeah, that's the case. I'd like to do some military service and then see what I can do from there. But yeah, I would like to be a pilot in whatever capacity I can.
Okay, so wants to be a pilot and have you been a sailing instructor? Am I correct with that?
Yes, the past three years I taught sailing down at the apprentice shop in Rockland.
Okay, wonderful. He has a very strong academic record, of course. And he, one thing I remember, Grayson, is your words about how you like to do your research before you take a position on anything. And I think that's very important as you work on the state board or any board that you serve in the future. So I'm very respectful of that and really appreciate that, really. I remember you speaking very highly of STEAM. You highly support STEAM. Yep. And then you talked about your perspective from the Camden area and then now being in Northern Maine. And you're a brave hero to come up to Northern Maine in our cold winters and to, you know, shelter yourself in limestone because it is a nice rural area, but limited opportunities. And so I really, I really appreciate that you gave it a chance. And obviously, it's making a good difference and you feel that you're being well-served over there. I remember you also mentioning choice and how you support choice and the idea that you're coming to the magnet school is evidence of that. But I truly also believe in choice. We're all different and there's different schools, different needs for all our students and we need to try to meet those needs. You want to make sure that your peers are heard. And so you elaborated on not just expressing your views, but the views of other students. And that was, that was great as well. So I think you'll be a great addition, a great student voice to the state board. I think Casey will enjoy having a peer that she can collaborate with in preparing and having reflections about the board. So I look forward to working with you and I really don't see any holdup with the Education and Cultural Affairs and the Senate as soon as they get together in January. So welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you, Grayson.
Thank you. I'm excited to get going with all this.
That's very good. And Grayson, I'm sure you know that Fern DeJardin, who just spoke, is a resident of Santa Gatt. So she's just a short drive away by Arista County standards. And a voice you've heard earlier, John Bird is from Rockland. And of course, you're familiar with that area too. So you have some folks that have some geographic things in common with you. Welcome aboard. We look forward to engaging you as much as we can during this process where you are the designee, but not yet fully confirmed. And so we're going to continue to be in contact with you and try to engage you in the work of the board. And I think probably Wendy will have you be an active part of the Student Voice Group in the near. in the near future. And one of the things we want to do is give you some orientation and background and see if there's one of our committees that you'd also be interested in joining. So, we're going to be ramping up to that. So, welcome. Welcome. Pleased to have you with us. Yes, Jenna.
Yes, I just wanted to say to Grayson, I hope you have some interest in the Air Force Academy, because we have some very, very special people here in the state of Maine who have both attended the Air Force Academy. And it looks like with that background, you kind of would fit in just perfect, especially wanting to fly. So, good luck in maybe looking at the Air Force Academy.
Thank you. And at this point, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent from the board to take an item out of order. And that item would be Roman numeral VIII-B, the Integrated Consolidated District Governance. The rationale is that Dan Chuda is going to have to leave us at 2:00, and I think he can help us at least get a context for that meeting. So, without exception, if there's any objection, hearing none, we'll proceed to new business, Roman numeral VIII-B. The issue is integrated and consolidated district governance. Martha is not with us at this point. And so, if the members of the committee would like to at least introduce the motion for us, and then we'll ask for Dan to get some insight before we proceed. Fern, go ahead. Your mic on.
Hey, I just needed to pull it up on my computer here, because I thought I printed it, and I didn't print it. So, well, hold on a second. Hold on. I can probably... I'd like to make a motion that we approve the draft of the letter that has been given to us as a response to the Valley Unified Educational Service Center.
Second motion.
And that's seconded by Jane. Thank you, Jane. Okay. Do you want to queue up the discussion for this, Dan?
Sure. So, as many of you know, we have a project that's been underway in the St. John Valley. And one of the pieces that has prompted this letter is that Education Service Center, formerly Regional Service Center, is not an entity that can operate a school. And so, we need that the communities there to determine what entity will be operating the school. And so, through this letter, both the State Board and the Commissioner would be asking for the communities involved in the project to submit, as you can see in the second paragraph there, a written plan for developing that governance structure and then evidence that all three boards have voted in affirmative to adopt that plan. And that would be due by the end of this calendar year. So, in a nutshell, that's essentially what this letter is to the Director/Superintendent of the Valley Unified.
And am I correct in my understanding that the Commissioner and Scott Brown of the construction team have met with Superintendent Sirwa and perhaps other representatives and discussing this? And so, in many ways, this is a written confirmation of those discussions, which I believe they had requested, if I'm not in error.
Requested the letter.
Yes.
Yes.
Again, just to remind folks that the Integrated Consolidated Construction Program is a separate program from our normal school construction program. It has a different set of rules and a different funding source. And so, you know, that's the context here. They were, the Valley Unified project was, I believe, the first of, in ranking of all of the schools that went through the competitive process. And they need to either get a governance structure in place, which, in the words of statute, is legally capable of operating or constructing public schools, and get that plan forward, or else the State Board and the Department are going to have to look at who the other options are to move up in that process, if indeed there are any. Peter, is that consistent?
That's fine. And I understand the date was what they agreed to.
And Martha, thank you for coming back. We moved up your action agenda items to be sure we had Dan here. And would you like to comment on the letter and the process that your committee went through?
No, that's fine. I heard the tail end of yours, Wilson, so unless somebody has questions.
Okay, so, we do have a motion on the floor, Martha, that has been duly seconded. Is there further discussion or questions related to Exhibit 8A?
B.
B. Thank you.
I would submit that there is slight redundancy in the one sentence. So, if you really want to vote on the actual wording of that deadline sentence, the deadline for submitting is due. I don't think the deadline is due. The deadline is, or the documents are due.
Deadline for submitting the documentation of a written plan, evidence of all three boards. Is that the sentence?
Yes.
Confirmed to "is." Is that how you'd like it to read?
Yes, I think that "is" should come after the department. The deadline for submitting documentation of I and II to the Department of Education is December 31, 2020.
Does everyone have that? I think I have that now.
You want to change the letter after you've done this?
So, after five separate reviews, we always find those things. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Have a set of eyes again.
So, we have that revision. And again, I'll ask for a rule by exception. Now, it's consent. Is there any exception to that change? Therefore, the document's amended, and that's the question that's before us. Further discussion. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of accepting and transmitting this draft in final form, please signify when the roll is called.
Wilson Hough.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern DeJardine.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Martha Harris.
Yes.
General Point.
Yes.
Okay. Votes unanimous. One goes present and voting. Motion carries, and the document will be transmitted. Thank you very much. We will now proceed to the normal order of business, which is special reports and the report of our Charter Commission representatives. We normally start that freka with General Point.
I don't know why I just didn't... Never mind. Okay, the commission met on October 6 via Zoom again. The commission approved the Maine Academy of Natural Sciences' request to amend their bylaws. We also approved the Maine Academy of Natural Science to amend their school mission. The mission that they have looked at and have spent many, many months on made total sense to our committee, and that was why we approved it for them to do that. We also approved the Maine Academy's professional funds development request. This was for $750 for a math acceleration training program connected with Newia and Khan Academy. We approved the Acadia Academy's renewal application for five years. We saw at the meeting tremendous parent support, acknowledgement of their own building that they now own. And one family member spoke about two years waiting to be able to have their children come to the school because of the lottery system, and that they were willing to wait to see that happen. They wanted their children there so badly. We also approved five years for Maine Arts Academy with a few recommendations that need to be followed up in the coming year. The search committee, of which we have two of our members right here, Fern and John, they have been meeting for the last month. And the committee actually consists of Shelley Reed, John Byrd, and chaired by Fern. The committee issued a final report stating that application materials should be received at the commission office by October 19 at 5:00 p.m. The materials will be accepted until a suitable candidate is found. I just have to acknowledge the work that these three people have done. They've had over 19 Zoom meetings in the last two months working on this. And what we have seen to date has just been incredible amount of work and so well-done. I'm sure it's going to lead to a very, very good executive director. So, unless there's anything that you two would like to add to what I've already said, please do.
The only thing I'd like to add is that if any of you know of any wonderful person that would do an excellent job as executive director of the Maine Charter School Commission, please encourage them to apply. We're looking for that one perfect candidate, and any help you could give us would be surely appreciated. Otherwise, Jenna, I really appreciate your report.
Very good.
That's it.
Thank you, all three, for the work that you do. And Jenna, of course, for your report. The next special report is from Professional Standards Board Representative, and that's Peter Geiger.
This will be somewhat brief. The next, the second meeting of this particular group is October... Mary, what'd you say? Was it 16?
19.
19, okay. Sorry, 19. And so, the first meeting we organized established what the role of this particular group is. And two people came forward to be the chair and the vice chair. And it's been a bit of a challenge to find the date, to validate that works for this particular group. Eighteen members of this particular Professional Standards Board also served on the 115 group that Dan has. So, at least they're mostly up to speed, although the chair and vice chair are not on that particular group. So, it'll be an interesting second meeting.
Any questions for Peter? Looking forward to getting them ramped up so that they can provide some sort of official response to the legislature, which is expected in January. Thank you for that. And Dan, I know you have to go to other meetings, and thank you very much for being with us today.
My pleasure.
Always appreciate it.
Thank you.
We would move to the next item of business, which is unfinished or old business. It is the 2021 Action Agenda. We had a good discussion this morning, and you have a draft document before you. And we had discussed some items that would be added to the action agenda and discussed this afternoon. So, I would begin by reminding folks in terms of parliamentary procedure that this is a document that was tabled, an action that was tabled at the last meeting. And so, we actually need a motion to remove it from the table for consideration. So, the chair would entertain a motion to that effect at this time. So, moved by John Byrd and seconded by General Point. Would you call the roll, please, Mary, on that?
Wilson Hough.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
Fern DeJardine.
Yes.
Peter Geiger. Martha Harris.
Yes.
General Point. Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Vote present and voting. Thank you very much. We now have that item on the table. I would ask you to refer to that in our discussion this morning. We arrived at what I think was a consensus to add an item that would be worded, and I'll try this on you, to advocate for improved ventilation and funding for school construction. And perhaps we could have some discussion around the attempts to develop language for that particular item. And if we can get language we like, we can amend the document to include that. Hearing nothing. I can't add it without either a motion to amend or at least some discussion. Jane?
I, on the action agenda for 2021, I move that we add, under school construction, we add a bullet. And I'm sorry, I didn't write fast enough for your wording.
Well, it doesn't have to be my wording. I was just trying to get things out. But it's "advocate for improved ventilation and funding for school ventilation."
You may want to call it "school climate," because it's not necessarily just ventilation. I mean, it is ventilation, but it's time to say air conditioning. But there's a lot that goes into "school climate," and it can be any number of ways.
So, let me just see whether we're into discussion on the motion or not, Peter. It's, do you want to continue with the process to bring in a motion forward, Jane, or you want to wait until we try to parse some of the language? Your call. But you have to say it out loud.
I know. I have to click on the right button fast enough. I made the motion, I would say, so on second, and then this discussion was what my thought was.
That'd be fine. Thank you. So, we'll continue with that. We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, John Byrd's got a second. Now, let's continue with the discussion. And I think we can entertain Peter's comment as part of that discussion. You can pick up from there.
I was out there for a second, so maybe I need to hear the thing again. What would be that wording?
You want to try your wording, Jane, or you want Mary to try to read it back? Or you want me to try to do it again?
I'll let you do it again.
Okay. I believe where we were this morning was something close to "advocate for improved ventilation in school construction and funding..." "...and funding for ventilation in school construction." It's not the most articulate phrase.
It's fairly narrow, but I think it's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Martha? Is that Martha?
I think when we were talking this morning, we added heating, cooling, and ventilation, not just ventilation. I know that Jane mentioned that, particularly in the cooling aspect. I don't know if that should be part of the motion.
Perfectly willing to entertain that. I'd like to just hear some discussion. Jane?
I'm all for that wording. I didn't know from... I didn't know from, we haven't had enough discussion to know whether people want to limit it or expand it a little bit. I'm for expanding it.
Hey, let's just continue down that line of discussion and see where we are.
Makes sense to me, expanded. I would expand it.
Okay, it sounds like we, we, we've got more than enough votes to, to go with the expanded language. So let's, let's see if we can put something together that we can do by consent here to advocate for improved heating, cooling, and ventilation for school construction. And, and I'll just say, and funding for same.
Sounds good.
So are we asking for more, more money for existing schools? Or are we asking, because when you build a school, you, you have money for those things. So are we asking, is this for schools that are not up in construction?
Well, the, just before it, it says increased bond limit for school construction. So we're already asking for that to get more funding money.
So, so Peter's question is if we're asking for money beyond that is targeted for these areas, is that what you're asking, Peter?
No, when you're building a school, you're going to have money for heating, cooling, and ventilation. So is this going to be asking for money for existing schools specifically for heating, cooling?
Okay, so, so the language we have before speaks to school construction.
And, and there is money for that, because that's part of the building ability.
Correct. But there's also an advocacy role that can be played in that process by the construction committee to say, are we doing enough here? So.
I think the language that's important there is both in our school construction committee and for existing schools, because we're not excluding that group, right? So you need to have both.
But also we don't have a way to give money to an existing school project because there's not a process by which people apply for money.
Right.
I think, I think the point is you, you, you want to address ventilation in, in the process of cooling and heating.
Can, can you folks on Zoom hear that discussion well enough at the other end of the table? No, you can't. So the mic's way down here, so we need, with our masks on, we need to kind of use it.
I just use my outdoor voice?
Use your outdoor voice, Casey. We know you have one, so. Go ahead, Casey.
I was just saying that, like, language-wise, just from what I'm hearing in this discussion in the room, is that we need, we already have school construction.
They don't make that very easy.
Casey wouldn't have any trouble doing it. Just trying to get a mini USB to cooperate. See if your fingers are more adept at it than ours. Did everyone?
Had to be, okay, Casey. You just needed to threaten to come up. Now, we may have to recycle this, I don't know.
What does it look like to you?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, but not through the, what's out the aisle. It's coming through your computer.
Do you know how to run this?
No, I can just tell because the screen is still like. It doesn't even look like it's turned on.
Yeah, it's illuminated.
Is there a power button on the bottom?
We have to reboot it.
This is a great view of me.
Fern?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
So you can hear us?
Thanks, Grace.
Yes.
Okay, good. Nice going.
So, so, so I, I regret to announce that Casey can, can no longer be a member of the board. She's going to become an employee, a technician for us.
It's all guesswork.
Thank you, thank you, Casey. So the, the, the nature of the discussion we were having was around the wording of, of how we bring heating, cooling, and ventilation into our action plan and whether or not seeking new funding is, is part of it. And I, I have a suggestion in terms of process, but I want to see where folks are in terms of that particular discussion because Jane was trying to get an amendment to the floor for action.
This wasn't evident. I think we should include our existing schools.
I, I can't even hear you, one of these folks.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm so used to like keeping myself more quiet. Um, I think that we should include our existing schools.
That, to me, is the only thing we should be discussing because everything else is new construction. So if somehow there's going to be any monies that are made available through COVID, that this then would be directed toward that. But if they're not in a regular.
So, so I would respectfully suggest that, that the, the large monies that are going to be available to COVID are federal dollars and those are going to go through the, the governor's executive order process. So we can advocate for that, but, but we're really not on the inside of that process, right?
Yeah, I would agree. We wouldn't be, but that's okay.
In the spirit of the times, I think.
That's the best.
It's just advocating for, for heating and cooling and ventilation for all schools in Maine. Obviously, the new ones are going to get it, as Peter said. They just have to get, get it so it's state of the art, given what we're dealing with. And we just say for all other schools, if the money isn't there, it's not going to happen.
Right.
We're just advocating for it.
Yeah, right.
We can't appropriate it.
Correct, yeah.
Well, advocating for funding could be part of advocating without having to spell it out. Advocating is advocating. And that's sort of the structure we've tried to adopt with our action plan is to say we're, we're going to advocate for something and.
I'll leave out the word funding.
Advocate for funding for heating and cooling and ventilation.
So, so, so Jane, the people in the room are, are suggesting that if we say advocate for heating, cooling, and ventilation for, for Maine schools, is that what I'm hearing in the room? How does that sit with you?
I like the generic at the end, and funding, just so that they know we're aware that, to me, on renovation funds, that we know that that's going to be something that the construction and then the board is going to look at, those three aspects. So I like having just not new funding, but just funding so that everyone knows that we know what needs money.
By saying all Maine schools, you got that in there. Am I wrong?
All right, so, so Jane, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you to take your previous motion off the table, if you'd be kind enough, and, and submit your motion to amend as you just described it.
Okay, so two motions. One is to remove the first motion of the.
Just withdraw it.
All right.
Will the second agree to that? The second agrees to that, thank you. Okay, and, and your motion to amend reads?
To advocate for ventilation, cooling, and heating for schools and the necessary funding. I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, for, for, for schools and school and, and funding for, 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 for the same, okay? So that's your motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
It was different.
Yes, it was.
It was heating and cooling, ventilation, and funding for all Maine schools, for Maine schools. I think that's the way we have it.
I'm asking if there's a second.
Second by Martha.
Thank you, Martha. So now let's talk about how we say this. Folks, we're spend, we're spending time trying to figure out how many angels can dance on the head of a pin. You're very wise, he said. Is there discussion? A call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment is to advocate for improved, and I'm not sure I have these in the right order, Jane, so tell me.
That's all right.
Ventilation, cooling, and heating, I believe is the way you said it.
Yeah.
Yep.
For Maine schools and for funding them. All those in favor of that amendment? Have to, have to do the.
Wilson House.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern Desjardins.
Yes.
Peter Gaggar.
Yes.
Martha Harris.
Yes.
General Point.
Yes.
All those voting, present voting in favor. The amendment carries. We're back to the main motion on the action plan. Do we wish to include items on transfer appeal process and/or student members? And I'm, I'm, I'm going to suggest in, in the interest of time that we defer action on those until the November meeting. Well, you could make the motion.
No, you said, you already said it.
No, the, the chair was simply making a suggestion, so.
Who would else second it?
Doesn't need to be, does it?
Pardon?
It doesn't need to be. You can just bring it up next month. Yes?
I made my suggestion.
All right. Second?
So, but you're feeling it, it requires a motion. I was looking at Peter to make the motion and I would second it. Are we just moving, are we, is the motion to move this item to next November?
That is correct.
Yes.
I, I will therefore respectfully make a motion to move the action agenda item to the November meeting.
Okay.
So, so the motion has been made by Peter and seconded by John to move our, our action, our, to move this business item to the November meeting. Yes, who have I got here? I, I have a member of the public trying to speak. And, and I'm sorry, number one, I, I have a business item on, on, on the floor, which I'm trying to get off the floor. It's not going to help us. Number two, you have to turn your mic on if you want to speak to us. But if you just bear with us for a moment, I'll, I'll address you, okay? So, so we have a motion. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call for action on the motion. All those in favor?
Wilson House.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern Desjardins.
Yes.
Peter Gaggar.
Yes.
Martha Harris.
All right, yes.
Thank you.
General Point.
Yes.
Okay, all those present voting unanimous, thank you very much. We'll move off on that now. I want to get back on our, our agenda. And I, I do recognize we had a member of the public who's trying to speak. Our rules don't normally provide that. But it might be an issue related to timing. And so I would ask unanimous consent to entertain a member of the public to speak to us. Without exception. Yep. Okay, so, yes, please, go ahead.
I'm asking for this person who is, we're asking transfer for another school. And this is very complicated situation. And we wait long time for, for, have a resolution. And now this is move for, for November. This is difficult because this is life, life for.
We haven't moved your, ma'am, we haven't moved your business to November. That was the, I.
I wait long time for this.
We, we, we will get to your business in the course of our agenda. We will get to it today. Thank you for asking the question. Okay?
I don't know okay or not, but, okay, think so.
Okay? So we are back on our item of new business, which is consideration of University Maine Cape Review Team. You have that item before you. And Wendy, would you care to introduce that item?
Sure. I draw your attention to exhibit 8A and remind you about the conversation that we had earlier in the. and remind you about the conversation that we had earlier in the board meeting when we discussed the need for a CAPE site review team because the CAPE review has been scheduled in December. And I know Peter made some good points of clarification. I just want to reiterate that the University of Maine will have two different site reviews because there are two programs that don't fall under CAPE review. And so there will be two different teams, and I'm so pleased that Fern has agreed to participate on both teams. So just for the record, the following individuals are recommended to serve on the review team. Dr. Catherine Yardley from the University of Maine at Farmington, and Dr. Andrea Stares-Davenport from the University of Southern Maine. And on our behalf, on behalf of the State Board of Education, Dr. Fern Disjardin. So I move that the State Board accept the proposed review team.
Very much. Is there a second?
Second, general point.
General's seconded. Is there any discussion? Very none. As for call of the roll.
Wilson House?
Aye.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
John Bird?
Yes.
Fern Disjardins?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
General point?
Yes.
unanimous, one goes present and voting, the motion carries. The team is appointed. Thank you so very much. Nice job, Wendy, as always. That concludes our scheduled new business, and now we move to student transfers. The board will meet in executive session to discuss the appeals. The board will vote in public to approve or disapprove the appeals. So we will now be considering requests for board review commissioner's decision regarding transfers of students to another school pursuant to Title 20-A, Section 5205, so Section F Paragraph, excuse me, Subsection 6 Paragraph F. The board will be going into executive session to consider the requests because each one involves reviewing and discussing information contained in student records made confidential by the federal law known as FERCRA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. The parents and any attorney representing a parent are welcome to attend the executive session for a discussion of their particular student's transfer, as are the superintendents of the school districts involved in that requested transfer. The board will review each of the transfer requests in separate executive sessions. Today, the board has two transfer requests. After the board comes out of executive session, the board will entertain a motion and take a vote on the disposition of the requests in its public session. The board's role in these proceedings is to review the commissioner's decision based on the record that was before her at the time the decision is made. Although the statute directs the board to communicate with the parties involved, which the board has done, the board cannot accept any new evidence pertaining to the transfer request that was not considered or not available in the record at the time of the commissioner's decision. The board provides for public comment, which was explained earlier in the meeting. In the executive session, the same rules apply for public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit for comment. This is not a time for debate, nor a time to introduce new evidence. It's a time for families to highlight the things that they want the board to consider that are already in the record. The chair will maintain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Title 1 of the Maine Revised Statute, Section 405, Subsection 6, Paragraph F, to discuss the information contained in records that are confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, Title 20 of the United States Code, Section 1232G, relating to requests from MG and XG to review the commissioner's decision to approve or disapprove the request for transfer pursuant to Title 20-A, Section 5205, Subsection 6, Paragraph F. The chair recognizes John Bird to make a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Wilson House?
Aye.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Yes.
Disjardins?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris? General point?
General point, thank you. That's unanimous among all those voting and present. The board will move to executive session. Members who are attending from Zoom, other than the family members or superintendents associated with these two individuals will need to be put on hold or put on hold so that they can leave the session and be called back if they so desire. So while that process moves ahead, we'll await confirmation of folks going offline.
Okay.
You have guidance for me on that, Mary?
Could you explain to Grayson?
No, Grayson, that includes student members. According to ruling by the Attorney General, student members can't be part of the executive session. Okay, so, you know, you can sign off and come back, or you can be put in the waiting room and we'll bring you back. Okay? Okay, very good. So Ms. Winchester, we will be back to you once we've concluded with this one. Okay? So please don't go away.
Do we have everybody?
Everyone's in.
Okay, we are back in regular session. I will confirm that during the executive session, one of the appellants, XG, indicated that she did not wish her appeal to move forward and her mother indicated the same. So we are considering a motion in the matter of MG, John Byrd.
In the matter of MG, I move to overturn the deputy commissioner's decision.
Is there a second?
Second, General Point.
General Point has the second. Okay, is there any discussion among members of the board? Hearing none, I ask for the roll to be called.
Wilson has.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Aye.
Wendy Oles.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern Dischattens.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Martha Harris.
Yes.
General Point.
Yes.
Vote being unanimous for all those present in voting, the commissioner's decision is overturned. The transfer is granted. The board will be in communication with you in writing no later than Monday of next week to affirm its decision. We wish you and your family the best for this school year. Thank you. The next item of business.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Is in the matter of AM and RN. And having stipulated the terms and conditions under which the board will go into executive session, will now entertain a motion from General Point to enter into executive session on in the matter of AM and RN.
Some more.
Is there a second? By John Byrd. Okay, we're going to call for the vote on that. If there's no discussion, call for the vote by roll call, please.
Wilson has.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Oles.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern Dischattens.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Martha Harris.
Yes.
General Point.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The board will go into executive session now. As before, we will put all those that are on Zoom in the waiting room and we'll begin the executive session in just a minute.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're back in regular session. It is 3:10 PM. And the Chair would entertain a motion on the matter of AM.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion not to override Deputy Commissioner Shute's decision for AM.
There's a second?
Second.
Second from John Byrd. We'll ask that the roll be called.
Wilson Hess?
Wilson Hess says no.
Jane Sexton?
No.
Wendy Alt?
No.
John Byrd?
Yes.
Bernadis Jodens?
No.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
No.
General appoint.
Yes.
By my count, the vote is five no and three yes.
Correct.
Okay, the motion does not carry. I'll ask therefore for an affirmative motion that reflects the consensus of the Board so that we can structure it in that fashion. Do I have an affirmative motion?
So I'll make a motion to, on the, on the, on AM to...
Overturn.
Overturn, sorry. Overturn Deputy Commissioner Shute's decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John Byrd, I ask that the roll be called on the, on the second motion.
Wilson Hess?
Aye.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
John Byrd?
No.
Bernadis Jodens?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
No.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
General appoint.
No.
Votes being five in the affirmative and three in the negative, the motion carries. On the matter of AM, the Commissioner's decision is overturned and the transfer is granted. Do you have a motion on the matter of RM?
Yes. I make a motion in student RM not to override Deputy Commissioner Shute's decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
John Byrd, second. The roll will be called.
Wilson Hess?
No.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
John Byrd?
Okay, it's to uphold, it's to uphold the decision.
The question was, what is to uphold the decision?
Yeah, yeah, it was not to overturn.
That is correct.
Confuse me.
Not to overturn.
No.
Motion was to not to...
Wait a minute. I, okay, so it's not to override his decision?
To confirm his decision is what I understood the intent of your motion to be.
Correct.
So a vote of yes is to, is to affirm the Deputy Commissioner's decision.
Correct.
At this point, we have three votes that have been cast.
Correct.
One to not to confirm and two to confirm his decision. I believe that's what we had, Mary. Is that correct?
Oh.
Three votes cast?
Three votes cast.
Okay, that's John, you're, you're the fourth.
I, okay, I...
I think we're under it.
To uphold his decision, which was to reject the appeal.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Bernadis Jodens?
This has been confusing, really confusing because of the negative, which is not how we typically vote on it. And so now I'm second guessing myself. So Jana's motion was not to overturn.
Correct.
So to that, if I were to say yes, then we don't overturn. So I need to say no, I do want to overturn. So my response is no.
Okay.
To overturn.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
I'm all, I'm all confused. I'm all confused.
No, your logic, your, your logic supports your vote. Yes.
Okay.
Martha Harris?
No.
General appoint.
Yes.
The Peter vote?
Yes.
What was Peter's vote?
Yes.
And Miss Peter's vote, I think. My tally, let me ask what your tally is, Mary.
I believe I have three. Four, four yes, one no. Is that what you've got?
That's not, that's not what I have. So you're the official recorder, so please go back and...
Give me a second here. Sorry. Five to three.
And would, and would you just run through the roll call and tell us what you...
Five yes.
Just run through the roll call and tell us what you have and so people can hear what they...
For each person?
Yes, please.
Okay. I have no for Wilson.
Correct.
And I have yes for Jane.
Jane? Jane?
Yes, I agree.
Affirming, okay, thank you.
And I have yes for Wendy.
Yes, that's what I intended to vote.
And I have no for John.
No, I think you had yes for Peter.
Yes.
Okay.
John was a yes.
Bern, I have no.
Correct.
Correct.
Peter, I have yes. Martha, I have no. And Jana, I have yes.
Okay.
So five yes, three no.
Thank you. Just because there was uncertainty, I just wanted to be sure that we affirmed it. So the, the vote is five yes, which is to affirm the Commissioner's decision. And three no, which was to overturn the Commissioner's decision. So the motion is carried, the decision of the Commissioner is affirmed, and the transfer is not allowed. Okay? So as I indicated, Ms. Winchester, we'll be communicating those decisions to you in, in writing. They should be out of our office by Friday, so we hope that you have them by Monday. Thank you so very much for your advocacy for your, for your children. This concludes our regular business except for announcements. Are there any announcements to come before the Board? Martha?
Mr. Chair, I know that in the past, we had a student member who had not yet been confirmed by the Senate, but sat in probably for about six months of the year in every meeting. I would suggest that if we're in the same boat, you know, boat now, that we should invite that person that's been tapped by the Governor to our meetings.
We, we have invited Grayson to our meeting. That's him down in the lower quadrant. And we've expressed to him the intent to, to continue to invite him to our meetings in advance of the confirmation process. So yes, indeed. Couldn't agree with you more.
Right.
Thank you. And I hope Grayson, that's your understanding, that, you know, we'll, we'll be inviting you to our regular meetings, which leads me to my announcement, which is our next meeting will be on November 4th, which is a week earlier than we normally do it. Some folks would be inclined to say we'll know what the results of the election are on November 4th. I'm not quite so sanguine about that. I think we'll know some things and not others.
I'm not sure we know on the 11th either.
So, but, but nonetheless, we'll know what we know then. Yes, Jane?
I was going to email people some suggested comments on the proposed calendar, just so that in November, we can weigh in on what the 2021 draft is.
That's excellent. I remind folks that that is one of the duties of the, of the vice chair, to look at her calendar. So thank you for, for doing that. We'll look forward to that. John?
Wilson, this was addressed to you. It's about tomorrow's meeting. Educate Maine and Ed Sabone and Jason Judd. This is John Mulaney. This is part of this innovation program. Has this been circulated to everybody? I haven't. But it's tomorrow afternoon, 3:30 to 4:30. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap into it. It's, it's, let's see, what's her name? Anyway.
Jones, Judith Jones.
Chance?
Well, it's a Thomas College initiative with John Mulaney's endorsement. And it's, it's, it sounds like a great program. I, this was addressed to you. I have a copy of it. But I guess it didn't go to everybody else.
And it was from, you say John Mulaney?
John Mulaney, yeah. Dear Wilson.
I don't believe I forwarded. Did I send it to you before, Mary? That doesn't ring back.
I may have copied me on it because I do know him.
It is, it is on my, it is on my calendar.
But it's called Educator, Education Innovator Series. It's tomorrow, 3:30 to 4:30, virtual Zoom event. And featuring Jason Swanson, Director of Strategic Foresight. I have no idea.
Will.
But John is endorsing this.
We will send it to Mary to distribute to members of the board. Thank you, John.
Go.
Very good. Are there other announcements? Hearing none. I want to thank everyone for their perseverance today. And thank you for your, your service on committees. Again, Grayson, very, very much pleased to have you with us in attendance. And if there's no further comment, I will simply say to board members, please be attentive to your vouchers that need to be turned in. And without further comment, we stand adjourned at 3:23. Thank you very much. Bye, Wendy.
See you soon. Bye. Stay well.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.